Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular school committee meeting of the Holyoke Public Schools. It is November 20th, and it is meeting starting at 6:05 PM. I apologize for the tardiness. Roll call, please.
Here.
Ms. LaFave.
Present.
Ms. Brunel.
Here.
Mr. Romero. Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Present.
Ms. Rivera-Cologne. Ms. Feliciano. Mr. Wellahan. Mr. Colomore. Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
And the North Campus Student Rep is not here.
I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, one nation, one God, one common ground. I just have a few things first to start with, because I want to thank everybody that's in the audience right now for coming. Currently, we do not have a quorum, so we can't even pass a motion to suspend the rules to allow for public comment, being that it's off the agenda. So, at this moment, there is some, another board member coming. He was just running late, so as soon as he comes, we can go ahead and suspend the rules and then start with public comment. So that way, we do have a quorum vote. Okay? So, I also have to report. On March 29, 2023, Governor Healey signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law, other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March 31, 2023 to March 31, 2025. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. We're going to go ahead and move first to the student showcase. That way, it also provides time for our other board member to arrive.
So, we do have a video to share, but I would like Sasha to come up. We're going to be showcasing, I believe, Morgan's 4th Grade Math. So... Oh, we're not going to share the video. Okay. So, go for it. Sasha.
Um, so that...
Does she have a microphone?
We need you to go to the microphone, so that way, the people at home can hear. If you could. I don't, unless it's something that you're, I don't know. All I know is that we need a microphone. Yeah.
Yes, hello. Hi, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Holyoke. Good evening, paras and supporters of paras. We are, my name's Sasha Garcia, MIU. I'm the proud principal of Morgan in South Holyoke, and I am here today with my Grade 4 math teacher, Leslie Bogard, and a Grade 4 student, who we kindly refer to as Juju. And they are going to be presenting some math, some math today. I'll just say that. Thank you so much for welcoming us this evening.
Hello. I am Leslie Bogard. This is Juju, one of my 4th Grade math students. We have been working on multiplying fractions by whole numbers, and you are lucky enough tonight that we brought you chocolate. So, this afternoon, Juju and I talked about a Hershey bar and how it is split into 12ths. And she is now going to go around, and she's going to hand everybody, how much? 1 what? 1/12th. Very good. Go ahead and count our friends that are here that we're giving chocolate to.
Oh, we're getting chocolate.
And we've got gloves from our nursing office, so we're very, being as sanitary as we possibly can. She's counting.
Are we allowed to eat it? My dinner.
So, Juju, we have seven people here that you handed 1/12ths. So, our equation is 1/12th times 7. How much chocolate did you hand out? 7/12ths. Great job, Juju! All right. We have been working on that in 4th Grade Math, and we are continuing on after vacation with fractions that are higher than... Good job, honey. You did it. You did it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. She's keeping the other 5/12ths? How is that okay?
So, I just want to comment on that while we're still discussing trying to get the other person in. So, I always, so, I love using Skittles for probability or M&amp;M's, so I'm always a firm believer in, you know, the way to, you know, people's hearters through food, and it's a good way to make that connection, especially for parts of a whole. So, it was really great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any other comment? Thank you so much, but I really would have liked the whole 12/12th candy bar. All right. So, we're going to go ahead and move. I'm still waiting, and I'm sorry, everyone. Not here yet. She's giving me the whole! Oh, my, hold on.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. What's going on here? Bravo. Okay.
Okay, so before we even move to communication and reports, we're going to go ahead and wait for him to sit down and... No, you're good. Thank you for saving us, because we needed to meet the quorum. Go for it.
Adam Vice Chair.
Yes.
Make a motion to suspend the rules to allow the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda for this evening.
Second. Do I have a motion and a second? Any discussion? So, the motion is to suspend the rules and allow for public comment outside of what's currently posted on the agenda. Hearing no discussion, we, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. So, we're going to go ahead and move on to public discussion, public comment. Oh. And I just want to remind everyone that when you come up, please make sure to state your name clearly and your address, and it's two minutes per person, and we cannot go back, like, we cannot respond to anything during public comment. Ms. Wilson.
So, I'll be giving a 30-second, like, wrap-up. So, I'll be timing it, and I'll be giving the, like, a 30-second kind of wrap-up. Okay?
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So, I'll call the first individual is Jenny Rivera.
So, the microphone is already on.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
So, I just, I came over today because I'm in support, oh, I'm sorry, Jenny Rivera, 56 Moser Street. I should know this. What am I doing? So, I am in favor of the paras, because before becoming a city counselor, I worked at Ian White. I started off as a para with Ms. Kleshine for two years, and then I transferred down to the office. So, with that being said, I am support, and I want to say that para professionals are the backbone of our educational system, yet they are often unvalued and undercompensated for their invaluable contributions. It's time to recognize their dedication, hard work, and essential role they play in nurturing our students' growth and success. They deserve fair wages that reflect their commitment, ensure financial stability, easing the burden of overwork and stress, which is quite often what we're seeing. Let's stand together to support the cause for increased pay for para professionals, acknowledging their tireless efforts, and unwavering dedication to education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Did you want to submit that? Did you want to submit that into record?
I can take it.
Thank you. If anybody has anything typed up and you want us to submit it into record, it'll go in with our meeting minutes, by all means, just hand it to Ms. Wilson, and we'll make sure that it gets put into record. Our next one is Joe...
Kleshine.
Joe Kleshine. Oh, goodness, I'm having a hard time here.
Joe Kleshine, 63 Nanituck Street. So, I'll be quick. I'm also here in support of the para professionals, and I just wanted to speak to my experience this summer, where I actually taught a course through HCC that was working to prepare people to be certified as para professionals. I was not so subtly pushing the group that I had towards Holyoke. They were, there were nine young women, ages ranging from right out of high school to early 20s. They were excited, they were ready to go, they completed an intro to education course, they passed their exam. I brought in para professionals from Holyoke. I brought in June Lavelle. I brought in Lori McKenna, principal of Holyoke High School, because I was, once again, not so subtly trying to push them towards Holyoke, because of the nine young women, eight were women of color, and eight were both fluent in Spanish and English. And they struck me as the kind of people we wanted working in the Holyoke Public Schools. And I succeeded in getting them excited. They were ready. They were asking me questions about what it's like to work here. We even had a day at the end of the course where we were all going to apply. I was going to help them through the process, and then they looked at the pay. I literally watched the excitement evaporate. I was, I was kind of upset. One of the young women said to me that she did the math, and I can't verify her math, but I'll just say what she said, and she said she'd be better off working at McDonald's than being a para professional in the Holyoke Public School system. So, I share this because it's anecdotal, but I imagine it's not the first time that's happened, and I was pretty upset by it. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Patty Devine.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for allowing everybody to speak. I've never been a teacher. I've never been a para professional, but I certainly know many of them. In a prior life, I was a union business manager, and we learned that there are three things that are negotiable: wages, hours, and working conditions. Can't do anything about the hours. The working conditions, hopefully, are good, but you can do something about their wages. From what I understand, they haven't had a wage increase in three years, and it always seems to me it's the ones, I hate to say it, the bottom, but the ones that need it the most, and their pride is so much important, is important to them, and I just really think that they need to have a wage increase, and that's very important. And again, that's by law. So, again, thank you very much, and good luck to all you para professionals.
Thank you, Ms. Devine. Our next speaker is Felicia Bag.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. So, my name is Felicia Bag, 63 Merrick Ave, here in Holyoke. So, I have been a para educator for the Holyoke Public Schools for the last three years. Prior to my employment at HPS, I was a lead preschool teacher for nine years. So, I came in with a lot of experience in early childhood. Currently, I work two jobs, and I'm in school for time for my teaching degree. When I was hired, I brought, I was brought on as an instructional para. However, I have never been in a classroom alongside a teacher. I started by pulling students and planning small group reading. Shortly after, I was pulled to take over a 2nd grade classroom for a teacher who abruptly quit during the school year. It was a very difficult class with big behaviors. My 2nd year at HPS started out very similar. I was preparing to pull students for small group reading once again, but then I was pulled to teach again for another difficult 2nd grade classroom. I am now in my 3rd year with HPS, and you can guess it, I am teaching a 2nd grade classroom. This time, I started off on the first day of school. I've been told many times that this circumstances is unusual and not the norm. However, being in my 3rd year of teaching says something very different. I am responsible for lesson planning, teaching, attending teacher trainings, attending teacher meetings, grading, conferences, parent communication, and held to the same standards as every single teacher in this district, except I make para pay. What I do, and what a lot of people like me in the district do, is not subbing, it is teaching. You cannot sub when there is not a teacher to sub for, especially when we are responsible for leaving sub plans if we are out for the day. This logic just does not make sense. I am currently working as a teacher for my 3rd year, and I am not making a livable wage. It is unsustainable. Just like...
30 seconds.
I had to choose between buying my daughter glasses or going to urgent care. I cannot do both. I am one emergency away from being in a deeper hole. I have been told in district-led meetings, well, if you are a teacher, this is so disheartening, and it's an insult, considering I am teaching and I am in school to become a teacher, which is a slow process, because I have to work two jobs. Not to mention, being a para educator is a career. How degrading for us to be made to feel that we need to become a teacher in order to get paid a livable wage for the work we are doing daily. We work directly with our most vulnerable students. We are spit on, hit, bit, and screamed at daily.
That's time. There was a lot more.
If you would like to submit that, do you have that typed? Can you please? Thank you very much. Our next speaker is June Lavelle.
Try not to shake as much as I did the last time. Okay. June Lavelle, 18 Vadney Street. Good evening. My name is June Lavelle. I am president of the Holyoke Paraeducators Association. I am from Holyoke. I am a Holyoke homeowner, and my three kids went to HPS. I am here tonight to talk about retention of para educators. The Holyoke Paraeducator Association has over 200 members. The vast majority of our members live in Holyoke. Most of our union members send their children and grandchildren to the Holyoke Public Schools. I myself have worked in the district for 19 years. There are a couple of reasons that para educators are quitting in numbers that we have never seen before. Our current average wage is $18.26 an hour. The average salary is around $24,000 a year. In addition, our roles have changed significantly over the years. No longer are we simply correcting papers and packing backpacks. We are working with significant social, emotional, and academically struggling students. We spend time after school hours completing data and collaborating with colleagues on improving strategies to help our students, our kids. We are Holyoke. We love our kids, and we are committed to our district. One job should be enough.
June, 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 would you like to submit that paperwork?
Our next speaker is John Rivera.
Mic check? Sweet. Yeah, I don't want to sit, so I'll do the standing. Yeah, I could go on forever. Oh, by the way, John Rivera, go by JR, 125 Cabot Street, Ward 1, Holyoke. I am a resident of Holyoke, obviously. I'm from here, wasn't born here, but I was raised here. I was raised through the Holyoke educational system, so fighting on this struggle is really important, and I could go on forever on, like, peer-reviewed studies on the impact of raising teacher salaries, raising para educator salaries, but, you know, I'm sure we've read those things, and we know the statistics behind those things, and they're proving to actually impact students' lives and students' careers and keeping students in the cities that they were raised in, right? That student-to-kind-of-worker pipeline in Holyoke. Right now, what's going on is that most of these students are moving out, and they're getting better jobs elsewhere. You know, if you really want to improve the city of Holyoke, you're going to, you're going to want to fight for better wages in these struggles. You're going to want to keep students in our city and give them the option to move if they want, but to give them valuable wages, right? And keep them in that pipeline. Right now, I'm seeing a lot of my friends be para educators, which is phenomenal, but nonetheless, they don't make good wages, right? One job should be enough, right? So, it's super important that we raise wages. I mean, we have two things on the agenda regarding which: an update on student retention and chronic absenteeism of students. That's a big thing that gets impacted by teacher, teachers and para educators' wages. If you increase their wages, and if you increase their resources, these students will stay in Holyoke, and not only that, not drop out, which, you know, we've luckily, pretty much, a good chunk of it has been fixed, but, you know, we could always do more in the city of Holyoke. So, it's vital that we support this struggle. It's vital that we increase wages. It's vital that we give the para educators what they want, because...
30 seconds.
They're an invaluable resource to Holyoke. They're truly, you cannot put a money number, whatever they want, you should really give it to them, right? Because these folk go to get degrees, and they get these unbelievable debts, and they can't pay them off with just one job, right? And so, they're unbelievably stressed out, so it's important to give them exactly what they want, and right now, what they want is raises and a couple numerous other things. So, it's important to support them in this struggle. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. The next person, I'm just going to say the first name and the letter that starts...
She knows who it is.
And I think she knows who she is, right? Is it Jennifer?
She got the first name, right? So, I'm Jennifer Haugshahebink. I live at 1279 Bay Road in Amherst, so I'm not from Holyoke. I chose to work here, and I'm blessed to work here. I currently work at Sullivan Middle School. I'm the 7th Grade Science Teacher to wonderful, wonderful Holyoke students. On my team is Jessica Breznerhan and two paras. One that has been in place since the first day of school. She's teaching 7th Grade Math, McKissick. And then, we had an abrupt departure of our ethnic studies teacher, so a para educator is our full-time ethnic studies teacher, Veronica Santana. As a teacher, it's important that I have a strong team to support our Holyoke students. It is the goal of the city, the district, and the school committee to give our students a free and equal education, and in Holyoke, we want them to succeed, whether they stay in Holyoke or whether they go out and become famous in whatever way they want. It is our job to keep the doors open for them, and in order to do that in 7th Grade, we need to have a safe classroom, a safe and cohesive team, and that's just to get them in the door. That's to convince them to come to school. And then, we prepare the lesson plan that are engaging, and the para educators that are in place as teachers are doing that and more. That is what is keeping our students in school and is giving them the skills to be successful in 8th Grade and then on into high school. It is giving them the insights and showing them what they can do. And so, we need to value these para educators, not only the ones that are teaching in the classroom, but the ones that are supporting our students on bad days and good days. I implore you, the district, the city, and the school committee, to value them and increase their wages so they stay, so that I can stay, so that we can support the students of Holyoke, because that's why we're here. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Antonio Robles.
Antonio Robles, 527 South Summer Street. I've been working with the district since 2008. We got hired as a para in 2011. Went through the RISE program, been through the ABL program, been through the RISE program, SHINE program, and now I'm stuck in the, I say stuck, in student support, because it's something I like to do, being a difference, but our wages don't match our time, our workload. We literally have been pulled out of classrooms to be in classrooms, support kids in classrooms, support kids in the office, get beat up. I'm sorry to say, get beat up. I get scratched, I get bit, I get punched, but more to say, I've seen teachers be in need of our support, but our support is being taken away for their support, not only for them, but also for the kids, and I've been seeing a lot of, lately, a lot of my friends that I've worked with and teachers that I've had, I'm a Holyoke product. I grew up in the system. I was born here. I was raised here. I went through the educational system. I'm back because I wanted to be a difference in Holyoke. I want my students to be the same, but how am I going to have my students be the same when our teachers and our paras are leaving just because we're not valued? How can we be valued? You talk about retention. Give us, give us a livable wage. That's all we ask for. We're not asking for much. We're asking for, be fair to those that are doing what you're asking us. Sometimes, you're asking us more than what we can do. We could tell you what our job description is, but then we get pulled over here, we got to do this, we got to do that. But my thing is, I want to be that difference maker. I came back to Holyoke. I never left Holyoke, but I'm seeing people leave Holyoke just because Holyoke doesn't show them what they show, what we're showing them. And I really want to show, say one thing. I got friends here. I got people sitting in this actual chair. The chairman grew up in South Holyoke. He knows what it's all about. I got the superintendent who went to school with me. But I also see that the teachers that are committed, the paras that are committed, we're here because we care. We're not here just for money. We're here because we really want to be a difference maker, help us out, be those makers, instead of us wanting to go somewhere else.
Our next speaker is Gloria Caballero Croca. Is it our incoming Ward 4 School Committee Member come January 1st?
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for allowing the public to participate in this. I am a mother of someone who was a para professional for many years, Osma Ramos, and he works at the Lawrence School, and he struggled a lot, a lot, and he loved his job, and he really, really showed up for all the kids and every kid that needed him. That being said, when we talk about the words of equity, you know, inclusion, and all those wonderful words, we're not really delivering, you know, the true value of what inclusion is, what equity is, when we see people that really show up and work hard and support and work like a team, we are not delivering to, you know, for them to live a life that they deserve. We see parents leaving the city or taking their children out of the public schools from Holyoke to go to a different school. We also see para professionals that are fed up and tired of getting beat up and not being valued. I think when we talk about quality of life, let us not forget the quality of life starts in schools, with the quality of education, the quality of infrastructure, and the quality of life that we should be investing in, you know, the people who make sure that our students and our children move on in life. students, that our children move on in life. If we really want a good Holyoke, let us work together and let us value those who really work harder than us. I'm a professor. I don't need it. I never need a para professional, but I know that my granddaughter, my grandson need them. I know that my son, now that he's not a para professional, still needs para professional people to make a difference at the Lawrence School. So please, let us work together, let us value them and let us invest in, uh, quali- high quality education. They, I mean, we need you guys. We really do need you. Thank you.
And the last person who signed up, okay. So I'm not sure if anybody else that wanted to speak that came after the fact, um, you can, if you want to come up or...
My name is Dan Doherty. I live at 20 East Hampton Road Apartment N1. I work at E N White currently as a para. I worked for three years at Lawrence as a building substitute, in which, at which position I did every job there was at the school to do besides principal. And I have an, uh, associate's degree in liberal arts and a bachelor's degree in spe- elementary and special education. And I make seventeen fifty an hour. Uh, you know, which is, I get, I take home less than two grand a month. The apartment that I'm fortunate to live in, because my wife lives with, me and my wife live with my mother, so we pay half the rent, costs fourteen hundred dollars a month. And I assure you, it is not a plush place. I'm bringing this up because we need to be recognizing that I can't pay my rent if I had to just by myself on my paycheck. And I've been hit and I've, I've been assaulted by students on three occasions that I remember specifically, say nothing of any other times. Uh, I was working, uh, with a student recently and had to get moved to another group of students because boys in that class were making the, the young woman who was their para uncomfortable. So I had to go move to a different position from the kid I was working with and already built a rapport with, because that was happening and she wasn't getting any other support. And I'm telling you that, not to shock you, but maybe to shock you a little bit, I guess. This is what everyone deals with. Every para deals with this. Now, I'm fortunate in that I'm big, so I don't get as much trouble as somebody else does.
Thirty seconds.
Point is, paras don't make enough money. Building subs don't make enough money. Y'all have the power to fix it. Fix it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I don't have anyone else who signed up for, for public comment. Um, so I'm giving whomever is out there the opportunity to come up if you wanted, um, to speak.
I'm gonna go on the hallway.
Okay. Okay. So with that being said, public comment, um, is closed. I want to thank everyone who did come here this evening. As everybody knows, this is not something that we can discuss. Um, and I know a lot of the sentiment was, uh, that the school committee has the power. Just to reiterate, we do not. Uh, we are still under receivership. Um, so, but we do thank you for coming, um, because we're still like advocates, right? And we're here to listen to what's happening in, in the district, so that way then we can discuss, um, with the receiver. Um, things that, at the end, because our, why we're here is for whom? Students, right? So whatever it is that's gonna improve the lives of our students and make sure that they have, um, an equitable education. Um, but at the same time, we have to value our staff that, that are working with our, our students. So thank you again for coming. We truly appreciate it. Um, we hope the best. We're gonna go ahead and move on to student reports. And unfortunately, we don't have the Holyoke High School. And just a reminder, um, anybody that wants to submit anyways, you still could, if you want to email. Um, we don't have the representative for Holyoke High School North Campus. So Mr. Kennedy, um, for Holyoke High School South Dean Campus.
All right. Um, okay. Uh, my name is Evan Kennedy. I'm the Dean Campus Student Representative. I just have a couple of, uh, announcements. First thing, we held MCAS retakes for math, um, and makeup for ELA last week. Um, next, the gear up team hosted, oh boy, M, M CAC here for our seniors to apply on the spot for colleges. Uh, that stands for Massachusetts College Acceptance Celebration. Um, we had thirty senior participants, seven hu- we, uh, had a total of seven hundred and one thousand dollars in total scholarships. Um, seventy-six total applications with twenty-eight acceptances on the spot. Um, next, we hosted Girls in Trade with over three hundred and fifty female students from twelve trade schools between here and Worcester. This event was shouted out all over the media with our very own senior Natalie Cologne serving as the, uh, next. Uh, as Ms. Caracholo pointed out during her presentation, we have been without a CTE director for a couple weeks. Luckily, Joel McCalliff signed his contract as our official vocational director earlier, uh, late last week. Um, it was gratitude week. Um, it was planned by our guidance department, our wonderful guidance department. And our face coordinator for both dean and STEM has planned a hot chocolate welcome surprise for all students tomorrow morning, November 22nd, starting at seven fifteen. We will be serving all students a cup of hot chocolate as they arrive outside the building. Stop by and grab a cup if you'd like. And finally, tomorrow is opposite day where teachers will dress as students while the students put on their best boss outfits to look like the staff. Best dressed teachers, best dressed teacher look-alikes will win a prize. And that is all.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the vice chair reports, um, the Abrazo Award, um, through the National Hispanic Council. I unfortunately was not able to attach, but I'm not sure if you guys were able to have looked it up. No, it wasn't. Um, does anybody know where Ms. Tensley Williams went to? Is she okay? Oh, okay. A little bit worried there for a minute. Um... So in regards to the Abrazo Award, it is a, a recognition that is given on behalf of the National Hispanic Council through the National School Board Association. And it's for someone that has done, um, has made an impact on students, um, of Latino culture, um, within a district. Um, last month, I was, I put forth a name, uh, which is Ed Case from the South Holyoke Neighborhood Initiative. Um, but then it was asked to be tabled because, um, you guys wanted to think of other names, uh, that you would want to submit, um, for nomination. So... Does anybody have any questions in regards to the Abrazo Award? Now, remember, a nomination does not mean that they automatically win. This has to go through the National Hispanic Council. Um, they will review the applications and the National School Board will pick who the winner is, who will then, um, go to the conference and receive their award, um, during our joint council, um, luncheon, uh, which is the National Black Council, the Native American, Alaskan, um, Alaska Native American Indian and the National Hispanic Council. Um, though, which will be held in New Orleans in 2024. So did anybody have a motion? Um, Ms. Brunel?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to support your nomination of Ed Case for the award.
Is there a second? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. So I'll go ahead and, um, put forth the, the nomination and fill out the application. And hopefully he wins, right?
Thanks for doing that, Eldridge.
No, absolutely. We have to recognize the hard work that he's doing. Um, he does it on all venues. It's not just focused into the Ward Two, although I was there for Morgan Night on Friday and they always request in the bingo ladies. Um, but, um, he does a lot. So the back to school, the, the basketball tournament. So I really appreciate the work that he's doing here in Holyoke. Um, the next thing on my, on, on my report is what I'm asking every board member here. Um, again, as we are looking to potentially start the transition out of receivership, but even if we weren't, let's put it that way, even if we weren't to come out of receivership, I think it's really important that we all review the policies. Um, and so we have our own policies on the HPS web- website as to what our roles and responsibilities are. It talks about, um, visiting the schools, right? Um, we can't just walk in. We're not there to be investigating. We're, we're not there to, you know, be like, oh, look what they're doing and what they're doing wrong. Um, it also talks about, um, kind of like the chain, almost like a chain of command type thing. And, and, um, I implore you all to review them, um, because I'm, eventually we have to ask for a refer, to refer to the policies, because if there are things in there that we want to see different or need to be more up to date, then obviously that would be our policy subcommittee that would be doing it. Um, but I need everybody to familiarize themselves with what our, our roles and responsibilities are and when we're kind of stepping over the line and when we need to back down. There, Ms. Brunel?
Yeah, um, so when I saw this on the agenda, I decided to start reviewing some of the stuff. And, uh, we need to immediately update the school committee officers page. It says that the duties of the chairperson is basically what we have our vice chairperson doing. Um, so if you guys reference that, it's file BDB when you go into policy. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this one over to policy, I guess. Um, or actually, we could probably just make a motion to change it. I don't know if it would need to go through policy. Um, but the way the rules read is that the chairperson, um, conducts the meeting and is doing everything that we have our vice chair doing. And the way our rules read is that the vice chair only performs such duties, um, when the chair isn't here, basically. And then it also says that we have a secretary, which we know we don't currently. Um, so I want to bring that back up. And I'd like to see us set some kind of firm date where we have a job description by and then a firm date that we insist that we hire the position by, um, moving forward. So I don't know, uh, what's best. I don't know if we can make the change on a motion or if it needs to go to policy, Ms. Chair.
So on that, a lot of those policies are based, kind of, it's from MAS C. So I think it's the roles of across the Commonwealth. If I'm not mistaken, and I do have to, to verify, but I think I've had this discussion with a former, um, board member, Mr. Sheehan, and then that falls into our, either under our bylaws or charter, where there it says that the vice chair is the one that holds the meeting. So although it says it there under the MAS C, um, policies, it's like a generalized policy. Um, it's like charting the course, right? It's very general, but it's not individualized by, by district. So I just need to look, um, talk with a for- the former board member who had more in-depth knowledge on that as to how it landed, where the vice chair of the school committee for Holyoke. Oh, even better. So Ms. Wilson, you probably had a conversation with a, up at the Cape.
I did. I did have a conversation as to how, uh, we moved from our chair being the mayor, um, being, you know, uh, in control over our meetings. Um, historically, it looked back to, uh, when there was a teacher strike. And after the teacher's strike, um, it seemed to me, what my understanding is that, um, the next, uh, time for the voting for school committee, all school committee members were pretty much voted out. And in the next election, they were all voted back in. So I think, um, there was some sort of, I don't want to use that strong of a word. There's some sort of, uh, give and take and more of a take based upon the fact that, um, the reason the teachers were striking was because of a failed contract negotiations, that the school committee then voted the power out of the chair position, being the mayor, and instilled it in the vice chair position. That's my understanding of how that came to be.
So then, so I will follow up because then it would be reflected in meeting minutes from probably eons ago, right? But then, is it reflected somewhere else? Like, was there, is that part of our charter? Was that put into the charter? So I'll investigate more into that and go from there. Okay? But that was my only thing. I just want everybody, you know, I think, like I said, it's really important that, that we know our policies, um, and know what our roles and responsibilities are. Ms. Wilson?
So I believe, um, mistakenly, um, I had, the policy subcommittee had sent several things to be included, um, in the meeting today to be referred to, and one of them was the job description. And that was not included in this, um, packet. So, um, I'm happy to share that, uh, with all of, uh, the members. But again, the policy subcommittee did come up with a draft, um, of what an administrative assistant to the school committee, uh, would entail. Um, and so I'm happy to share that out with everyone.
So what we could do is, uh, we can put it on next month's agenda?
Yes, I'll look through my emails again and, uh, resend, because there was also pieces that I wanted to get approved by us
Okay.
of policy updates that unfortunately didn't make it into this packet.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Brunel?
Yeah, I just want to comment that, like, it just takes a long time to get some stuff done because we only meet once a month. So it's unfortunate that when you're requesting stuff to be in the packet, it didn't make it, because now that delays us a whole month, which delays us in posting the job position, which delays us in hiring the, the potential person. And I'm not saying this is any of our faults, but looking forward, you know, it's just unfortunate because it takes too long to get some stuff done around here sometimes. I just want to go on record saying that.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Soto?
I just want to say that internally, we did post for the position. We just, and I've had like two separate people inquire about it. And there just hasn't been any interest, um, for whatever reason. But, um, you know, that is give, in our current structure where we, we posted to see if there was anybody internal, um, that would, would be willing to, to support the school committee admin duties. Um, and unfortunately, you know, there were a, a couple of people interested, but then they, you know, after, after further, either reviewing the school committee meetings or talking to other people, they, they decided that, um, it wasn't something that they were interested in doing. So I'm, I'm interested to, you know, I, I do also want, you know, right now, I'm playing that support role and we do have somebody that's gonna be making sure that the minutes are updated, that, that agenda's posted and everything. Um, but I, I, I was at the subcommittee meeting where they talked about the duties and, you know, I'm in support of, of trying to find somebody for the amount of hours. I'm in support of, of trying to find somebody for the amount of hours that, that we think it's going to take. Um, I do have a feeling that it's going to be really hard to find somebody given, given like my attempts this year, uh, to find somebody. Trying to find somebody to do that work. So, um, I haven't been waiting around. We've been trying to get somebody to support internally and I'm interested to, um, to continue to push, um, externally, uh, I want to support it. And in the meantime, support, make sure that the minutes are updated, they're in the packet. I'm sorry, Ellie, I don't know how things were missed. Mildred and I both keep everything that was supposed to go on the agenda, probably three or four times. So I don't know.
Um, Ms. Brunel?
Can we please see a copy of the job posting? And, um, I would definitely encourage it not just being posted internally because if it is just being posted internally, I would assume it's on a stipend. So then we're asking somebody to do this on top of their regular job? So I could understand why perhaps they wouldn't be interested. So, thanks.
I don't, I
I'm sorry, Mayor Garcia.
No, no worries. The posting of internally, is it? But why haven't, why haven't we gotten to externally? Is that the union thing or assuming not, right?
Because we were waiting for a job description to come out of policy. So, um, I, while we were waiting for that, I was shoulder tapping people and opening it up to anybody interested in the district.
Okay.
To, uh, you know, to do minutes, to attend meetings, to, um, you know, just everything that our, our current assistant had been doing. So, you know, I was waiting for the detail, you know, for it to come out of policy. And then I can take that and we can post it externally.
So right now it's in policy and to what I understand, it's going to come in front of us for a vote to?
To refer it to the superintendent, which is receiver, which is what we do as a policy committee.
Okay.
We make that we, we actually, so the subcommittee created, I'm sorry.
Ms. Wilson, go ahead.
So the subcommittee, um, we had a nice rich dialogue about, um, what the role would entail, what we envisioned it being, um, how many hours, um, things of that sort. Um, and so we did develop a draft of what the job description would be. Um, so like I said, I can send it to all of you, um, for, you know, review, um, but it is ready to be reviewed by the entire school committee.
Excellent. So it'll be on our agenda for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And then so with that email, there was quite a few policies that I wanted to bring up as well.
Okay.
So there was quite a few things and I think it was, uh, during the transition, I think it, I might have sent it to one person and that person's no longer doing the role. So I think that's where it might've gotten missed.
I'm wondering if the, the posting internal was just to, that was like an interim until we are able to officially post and find someone permanently paid full-time?
I, I mean, the discussion we had in, in subcommittee wasn't a full-time role. It was something around 10 hours a week. So, um, there is no discussion about hiring somebody full-time given, given the job description that the policy subcommittee has. We would, we would have somebody just, and, and what I, what I'll say is we never eliminated the position. Um, I would say, you know, nine years ago, uh, what, what was done was the person that was doing the role also was told to, you know, to, to be the executive assistant to the academics team. And we kept that structure going till now. When that, and that person was really good. Um, she was very efficient, very knowledgeable, um, and they left. And, and when they left, um, you still have that, that position, that executive assistant to the, uh, to the academics team. Um, but in, you know, we, we asked my assistant same work that, that wanted. So we still have the, the, the existing position that was there. Um, it's just not full-time dedicated to, uh, to school committee admin role. And based on the job description that came out of policy, it's not a 40-hour a week.
Ellie, was there any discussion about having a 40-hour a week person versus a part-time person?
Ms. Wilson?
So there was conversations and based upon, uh, what we're looking at right now, um, I'm going to be honest with you. I have not looked at it and I'm trying to get into my email now. I'm in the process of switching from my personal to my HPS email. And I finally got on in a meeting on the internet here. So I'm very excited with my new computer. Um, so I'm looking to pull that up. Um, so if you give me a moment to log in, I'd, I'd be happy to answer that.
All right. So, but we're going to go ahead and continue moving. So, um, Ms. Wilson, when we get to your section of, um, update, um, if you can just let us know at that point. And, um, also after our meeting, you know, after the holiday, the Thanksgiving holiday, if you want to reach out and we can write down all the policies that need to come up for the next meeting. That way we don't miss any.
Absolutely. I'm happy to do that.
Great. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is from our superintendent receiver, and that's the HPS instructional practices.
Yeah. So I want to ask that, uh, Dr. Mahoney and Jackie Gleschin come up. Uh, this comes out of the, the last meeting. Um, there was a conversation about, um, Relay and, and really what, what Relay is and what they've done, which you'll learn in this presentation is really support our instructional leadership model. So, um, there will be a point where, you know, like this is just the way we, you know, our instru, our, our leaders, uh, make sure that they are monitoring instruction and what, you know, in support of, of teachers and in support of student outcomes. So I'm gonna present first. So let me get this going and then I'm going to hand it over to, uh, Ms. Gleschin and Dr. Mahoney. All right. You guys can get, get going.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. Um, I want to start with the challenge. So when, um, in 2015, we're still working to improve. Um, as we went into receivership, Doctors Reich was a strong advocate that any institutional, any instructional change is, it is led by a school. School principal is the leader of change. And when we looked at where we were with student outcomes, one in four third graders met or exceeded grade level expectations in ELA. Again, this is in 2019. One in five eighth graders met or exceeded grade level expectations in ELA. And not quite three in 10, 10th graders meeting or exceeding. Um, it was clear that we needed some substantial change to help improve student outcomes. Um, next slide. And it really began with instructional leadership and, and instructional leadership begins with the school principal. And how is the school principal utilizing their time and talent in service of ensuring kids get smarter? Um, I'm going to be, I'm going to give an example. Um, Mildred was with me, actually. We were at Kelly School. Kelly School had a great culture. People liked to be at Kelly School. Kids were safe at Kelly School. Jackie Gleschin was not making kids smarter at Kelly School. And I needed support in learning what the levers were to not only create a strong, um, positive cultural learning environment, but I also needed to learn what are the instructional moves that I need to make to ensure my teachers have what they need to get kids smarter? Like, that's the goal. Our kids should be leaving the Hoyoke Public Schools able to compete with their grade level peers in Needham, in Wellesley, in Boston, in any other community in the Commonwealth. And, and that really was the crux of moving towards how are we strengthening our instructional leadership? Next slide? So the theory of action, um, with the support of the BAR Foundation, how are we going to do this and not take dollars from, um, kids in is if we increase our leadership capacity and use evidence of learning, what are kids outputting every single day in class? And we implement a robust, improved instructional leadership system. If we improve the ways that we regularly, regularly monitor this, then teaching and learning will improve, student achievement will increase, and we'll deliver on our promise of providing a powerful, equitable and rigorous education. So like, that was the theory. We, we were at that moment in time as being part of, um, Hoyoke Public Schools. In receivership, it was change, let's change the teacher. We're going to change the teacher. We're going to help and never did we say, who's the teacher? Who's on the ground with the teacher? The principal, the assistant principal. We were not addressing those gaps. I'm going to call myself out again. That was a gap for me. I could lead a culturally responsive school. I did not lead a school focused on instruction. Yeah.
Just at this point where we were working with BAR, and to Jackie's point about Steve coming on in and, and supporting principals to do the, what they did really well. Well, the words of our former chief of schools, uh, Tiffany Curtis, we made a conscious decision to move away from being a system of schools to a school system. So what we were really looking for was a unifying set of principles and a unifying set of practices that you would find regardless of what campus you stepped onto, um, that principals and school leaders and teacher leaders were using to help teachers make kids get smarter.
Um, so with the, the help of BAR, we submitted an RFP or we posted, if you will, an RFP to get help on instruction. Who out there has built instructional leaders? Who has evidence that the instructional leaders that they built got kids smarter? Who built instructional leaders in communities that look just like ours? Um, so I was a part of this interview committee. Um, Mark Swagert from Donahue was part of this. Sacha, I think, was part of this. There were several leaders, Tiffany Curtis, Balleneer. Um, and we interviewed, um, BC's Lynch Leadership, Lynch Education. We interviewed, um, TNTP, the National Teacher Project, Relay, and, um, New Leaders for New Schools. All four of which have evidence of growing school leaders to lead schools where kids achieve. Um, and we landed on Relay. We landed on Relay after, um, more than one touch point with these people. Uh, after reading reports, after having evidence, after, um, doing some, um, reference calls. Hey, principal from Tennessee, how did it go when you worked with Relay? How did it go, um, when you worked with this partner? Next slide? So we started this partnership. And in year one, um, the focus of the partnership was growing the school leader. There were 36 participants, academic directors, pupil service directors. My, my position, which is the executive director of school leadership, principals and assistant principals. When we launched this work, and I'm going to be really clear, in year one, what this work was, was hey, Hoyoke, how do you do school? If I walked into any classroom across your campuses, what can you tell me teachers would be doing that is helping to make kids smarter? What are they doing around creating systems? And then what are they doing around rigorous instruction? We have, um, a set of guidelines that we have adopted from Relay. Call it our, our, um, Get Better Faster Scope and Sequence. And it's literally, here's 11 management strategies and here's 12 rigor strategies that if you coach up a teacher on, they will have better capacity at implementing your curriculum and delivering instruction so that kids achieve at higher levels. So those were the things we leaned into. And that touched teachers. And right away in that year, Steve and I, we're at Edsel's together, said, we didn't really communicate from, from us to principals to teachers, what that looks like. We were building the principals. We were really focused on the principal. But when the principal went to, um, practice their work, they were touching teachers. Does that make sense? So there became this like, what's Relay? No one told me Relay is this to. And, and it became very evident, I would say by November, when Steve and I, we sat down with Quentin Donahue and others, say like, oh my God, Relay is not doing anything to you. He didn't communicate that correctly. We are going to now communicate to you is we need to, as a district, land on the instructional model that we think is best going to serve our students. And that's what we're doing. We're not making you do Relay. That's, that is not what we're doing. But we are a teacher, going to help you discourse in your classroom. We know discourse is a good thing. And teacher, we are going to help you with some messy strategies like greeting kids at the door. And I'm going to show you how to do it and I'm going to model it for you. And then I'm going to come in your room and help you do that because we know if you greet each and every student at the door, they have, you're building a relationship and they feel more comfortable coming in. So in year one, I spoke a lot about year one. That's how it started and it just started with supporting and building the capacity of school leaders. Next slide? Um, in year two, we broadened that touch and we wanted to include the expert teachers. Because now I am coaching principals on how to coach teachers. And I need the principal to know how to coach their expert teachers to support teachers. So in year two, it was principals and assistant principals supporting expert teachers, special education, um, English language development coaches, um, and any new school or district leaders. So if we lost an assistant principal, the newest assistant principal.
Jackie, can, can you just clarify for the committee what an expert teacher it is, what their role is?
Yeah. Thanks. The expert teacher, in my, in, in my opinion, is, um, a fancy name for a, a teacher coach. They're the coaches in the building. So the expert teacher in ELA coaches ELA teachers and the expert teacher on the campus in math coaches the math teachers.
Thank you.
Also add that as part of Anthony's strategic plan in, in our first year, this move to working with the, uh, with the expert teachers was, uh, consistent with our move to have a greater degree of coherence and alignment at district level. Prior to last year, um, we had an academic department and a school leadership department that were really not working hand in glove, um, coming with schools. And so for that, that is the reason why expert teachers really weren't a part of that first year because they were seen as a separate kind of rearrangement and having assistant superintendent bringing those two departments together. Um, the first step was to make sure the expert teachers were airing the same coaching that principals and assistant principals were bringing to classrooms as well.
Um, okay. We are in year, next slide, year three, I think. We didn't get there yet, right? Um, okay. So currently, right now, we're in year three. Based on our current data, um, and, um, our strategic priorities, we have moved to, um, the Inclusive Schools Leadership Institute, which is principals, assistant principals. Schools Leadership Institute, which is principals, assistant principals, and coaches, learning through a year-long course trajectory on how we can better serve the needs of our exceptional populations in the classroom. That includes a summer, had a summer series that was in-person, and then it also includes six online professional learning series for, for school leaders, and in addition, these six teacher professional learning series that address the needs that teachers have named for us. So understanding learners and learner variability, differentiating your instruction, any training you have in your classroom, making affirming partnerships, a guide to rigorous instruction. So these were things teachers had said to us, I don't, I'm struggling. I need more tools in my toolbox to support these students who are having challenges with behavior in my classroom. Hey, we're going to address that. And, and that's not going to solve all the world's problems, that one online course. But it is going to give you strategies that you can use. So in year three, not only were your leaders still learning about inclusive practices, in year three, we also included teachers. And we'll see this on the next slide, but some of the preliminary data from the teachers is, you're really enjoying those sessions.
Sorry, can we go back to the slide? Because I'm just trying to capture things that aren't on our presentation in my notes. Thank you.
No, but I don't have, it's not all. There's an addition. Right, that's what I'm trying to capture on, on my paperwork, the cost.
Yeah, that, I mean, that has to be some timing thing. So I send it out.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not critiquing. I'm just saying, I'm trying to capture it on my notes. I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to write it down. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, go ahead. Sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, please.
Just, just to add to year three for a moment, three things I want to name. One is the value added for the online teacher series, these two-hour workshops that are taught live, is that it gives all of our teachers six learning experiences within the Relay Graduate School of Education. So they get a sense of like, it's not a theoretical thing out there. They now have direct experience of what the learning is like, and what it has been like for principals and for expert teachers. Two, this move, you know, this, this next piece around inclusive classrooms is very much, it's year, it's the focus of the superintendent's second-year strategic plan. So our first year was get at the core instruction, and that's what we did. And then the second year is getting at inclusive practices and working with students with learning disabilities and English language learners. And then third piece is just Jackie and I today spent about an hour and a half working with folks who are working with Jackie and Sarita Gravlin on the instructional leadership, and the folks who are working with Mary Ann Currier and Jen Albrey on the inclusive classrooms, and the work with our ELL students and our students with disabilities, and making sure that we're all at the same table talking about how are we coordinating work that we're doing? What changes do we need to shift? Where do we need to tinker? Where do we need to pull back? Where do we need to lean in some more? So we're really trying to make sure that this is not a jumble of a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit here, but that there's a coherent through line that leaders and teachers can point to.
Ms. Wilson? So my question is, with this wonderful training that's being presented to the teachers, is there, do they get professional development points? So it goes to their license? And is there any thought of actually taking it to the level of our paraeducators in our district as well? Is that like a year five?
We are, we are absolutely having conversations about how do we engage? As you heard from so many of the, of the folks who spoke tonight, our paraeducators are very much first-line educators in our classrooms. And so how we invest in them is very much on our table in terms of next steps.
Thank you.
So we have signs of progress. The first bullet is, I, I've heard Anthony say this, and I heard Anthony say, in 35 years, Jackie Gashin never had a set of instructional practices across HPS. And that is true, but it's only like 30, not that old. But, you know.
Or you said 35.
I have been either fighting receivership or turnaround, or been in turnaround since Josh was in before that. You know, at Lynch Middle School, we had multiple partners, and each and every one of them would say, what is your instructional strategy? What can we see across your, what is good instruction? What are the, what are the instructional practices? And never once did we have an answer. We didn't have an answer. One thing at Lynch, something else at Peck, and something else at Donahue, and Hoyoke High was doing good, so we don't bother them. There was never any cohesion instructional work across our school. And I have taught in almost every school. So we have that right now. We have intentional monitoring and responding to student learning. We have observation and feedback meetings and planning and data. And I'm going to, for a moment, Ellie and I have had this conversation offline, why are teachers stressed out? Get out of their classroom. Just let them teach. I just want to, I want to share what observation and feedback look like. Observation and feedback look like, I come into your classroom, I tell you I'm coming. I came specifically at a time on a lesson that we planned, talked about. Teach math, dividing fractions. They're going to struggle. Where do you think they're going to struggle? Okay, where do you want me to help out? Great. Leader goes into the classroom. They support getting, they don't sit in the back with a laptop. People win, and they say to the, what am I seeing? I'm seeing, all right, what are we going to do? Stop, let's stop. It's a collaborative effort. And then after that, the teacher's going to have an, an observation and feedback meeting with the teacher, and they're going to tell them all the great things they did. Then they're going to say, in this lesson, I want to talk about how you, you had a turn and talk, and this was the question. Watch, watch what I say in. And the leader models that same turn and talk, you saying that Get Better Faster, to ground it in, to give the teacher a model. And, and here's another word that comes up often, descriptive curriculum. Relay's just a script. It just tells them what.
Hmm.
Okay, so at that point in the meeting.
Yep.
The leader will say, okay, great. Do you understand the difference between what you did and I did was? Great. That's kind of how, what you're going to say and how you're going to get. I'm going to do the same, and then we're going to spar on it, so you know exactly what you, teacher, want to say. Not telling you to script anything, no book I'm giving you. You are pre-planning what you're going to say. In the history of teaching, ever practiced five? No. Just read their lesson, take their note. They never plan the words that they're going to say. And we need to really think about that. We have kids with large learning gaps. It's a pre-plan how we're going to address those gaps to get kids. I don't want the teacher to script everything. I'm not going to force the teacher any script. But when we say script in practice, we say, Steve, or you teach AP US History, and they are going to struggle here, I want you to pre-think what you're going to say, and then run it by me.
Scripted in practice tonight.
Yeah. And. And I, I feel like I've wasted a bunch of your time, so I'm going to keep moving. We do have really strong curriculum driven by grade-level standards. We do not have that.
Oh, God, no.
I think at one time, in the last three years, there were 11 different ELA curriculums loaded across the state. That is, so that and the academics team work on that is amazing. And then what I really work hard on with my leaders is distributed leadership. A principal cannot do it all. So principal of Kelly School, Erin Morris, how am I developing, to develop your, because you can't just go instructional. Have to lead instruction across your school with multiple people, because, because we all have other things to do besides instruction. Need to be instructional. This is just sampling of some of the teacher and leader feedback. I am not going to read it all to you. These data points and, and quotes come directly from anonymous back surveys after every session. After every session that teachers or leaders have. And so this is like, for clarity. We talked about the scripting. You're not handing any, they have a curriculum. Actually, the curriculum tells them the questions to ask. I, I would never, ever take that away from the teacher. But I am going to say to the teacher, did you read the lesson? I did too. The kids in finding the area of a rectangle with a missing side, they don't know that the opposite sides of a rectangle are equal. That's going to be a trouble. Let's think about how you're going to respond to that in the lesson, because it's not in the lesson. They're assuming they already have that. So I want you to script out how you're going to address that. We're pretty certain, based on the data that we've given us lessons, that's going to be a problem. The Get Better Faster, Scope and Sequence started in charter schools, but was pressure-tested and is used by hundreds of district schools. And I'm going to just like call out Paul Bambrick at Hoyoke. Anybody knows of him? He is a well-published author, and more importantly, a teacher and a leader. And he has worked his entire career to improve outcomes of children of college. And he worked and started in, in charter schools. But I have a, I have a belief in, in the work that we're doing, and I have done a ton of work with Paul Bambrick specifically, and it is not a charter, it is an instruction that gets kids smarter. And our kids in Hoyoke, they get smarter. We need for them to come across the state. Currently, we're not. There's no reason that they shouldn't. There's no reason that they shouldn't. But what we have been doing over and over and over again wasn't for the state. How we organize students in hallways and lunchrooms, this prison to, pipeline to prison mentality is not a thing. Don't teach people how to do that. Don't say walk silent. Don't say hands by your side, on the right side. That is not a thing. What is a thing is school leader. Transitions in your building are a make-or-break system. You need to build, you need to build leadership team and teachers, but there has to be a system so that every kid in your building knows this is how we transition from class to class. There is a system. So I just want to say, there, I, no, in my backpack of my coaching visits, I'm not handing out scripts for how you run your lunchroom or your lines, but I definitely am saying to Amy Burkety and White, what is your lunchroom protocol? What, what could I ask your kids? And they're going to tell me, are the five, you know, non-negotiables in lunchroom? What is the system? How do you share that? How do you communicate that? How do you communicate it to the family? So every parent knows what the rules are. What is the system? And then last, our instructional model is really about providing leaders with the tools and the training to help teachers improve their practice. It's, it's the principal, side by side with the teacher. I'm helping you because I want the kids in my building to get smarter. I'm next to you. I'm doing it with you. We cannot coach everybody at the same time. All of our leaders have coaching cycles. So in quarter one, they, they had about 16, 17 teachers in every building getting weekly coaching, and then that changed. So, so it, it ebbs and flows, and we've had teachers this year say, when am I getting coached? I, I saw you coaching them. When is my turn? And we've also had teachers say, are you going to stay with me for quarter two? I would like, and help my practice. So it, it is, while I'm sure not everybody, I, I won't say everybody's going to come to and say they love getting coached. I would say the fastest, worst, 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 worst,[1639.83]
And they really are very, very reflective on feedback that we're getting. And, and not just reflective, but reactive. Like we, this is an example. Like we heard that, you know, the way we were doing walkthroughs, um, you know, we, you know, not just the amount that we were doing, but how we did them. We got a lot of feedback and we, you know, we're course correcting that as we, you know, as, as we move forward. Jackie.
So, um, I don't, I want to change the title of that slide to Classroom Walk.
Thank you. Thank you.
But part of, part of a lever, a tool that a principal should is walking classroom. So I'm going to go to my last, my last building. I would walk every classroom, every morning and every afternoon. And I would stay three to five minutes. And there were certain things I was looking for that I wanted to see happening. And I would start my year by saying to, to teachers, I'm going to be here every day twice a day and I'm going to stay for two or three minutes and I'm not giving you back. But it's not about you in that moment. It's about, I walked thirty-five classrooms today and I didn't see discourse in one classroom. Now, on one day in two or three minutes, that's not a trend. But if I walk my building every day and I don't see discourse after ninety classroom visits, that's a trend. And I can say to my teachers, we all believe, especially with second language learners, that discourse improves content knowledge. Discourse helps somebody learn the content. So I've noticed in ninety visits, there's no discourse. So today at PD, I'm going to bottle for you and show you some discourse techniques. Because I'm not assuming you're not doing it on purpose because you don't want to. I'm assuming no one ever taught you some good discourse strategy. So I'm going to show them. That was the purpose of these walkthroughs. And I still believe it is a strong lever, but a hundred percent Anthony. We heard from schools, teachers, it's overwhelming, stresses me out. And we believe that principals can still identify trends. Maybe not going in for thirty-five classes. So what I, what we are currently, you still need to know what's going on in your building. Still need to get in every classroom. When I, when I ask a teacher, how's morning meeting going? You should be able to tell me because you've been in every morning meeting. And if it wasn't you, maybe it's your AP. You should have your thumb on the pulse of the. But you're a professional. You're a big boy. I'm not going to mandate thirty-five because I don't want to stress you out. I'm still going to ask you what the trends are. I'm just going to be, I think the number stressed people out and it stressed adults in the building out. But I do still think that our leader's accountable what's actually happening.
Ms. Wilson.
So I think part of it for me is I'm confused because we're using the word observation in so many different ways. So I would highly recommend that we really, so I love the fact that I love the idea of a walkthrough. In my mind, I totally now know it's different than an observation. It's not an observation. I get it. Come in, just check on me, do a quick hello and there's nothing bad, you know, and then walk out. I can understand that. But the difference is you also use the term observation when you're doing intentional monitoring and collaboration and coaching. And then you use the term observation, which is the big no-no-o of observation. When someone comes in and they're using it for feedback on your annual review. So it's very confusing as a school committee member, as a staff person to figure out, in my mind's eye, is this a walkthrough? Is this a collaborative observation or is not? And yes, you may have had the conversations, but me sitting here as a school committee member, when I hear from teachers, educators in our district saying, oh my God, these observations are killing me. I don't know which one they're talking about. And now I possibly can speak to it a little bit. Um, you know, because, you know, four people coming into your room, which I heard happens, four to five or six people coming in your room to observe you and pretending it's a natural state for a classroom for an observation is very different than a collaborative, you know, observation slash discussion, developmental collaboration is different. So thank you for that insight for me because it really did help. But I was also wondering, where can I get a copy of the GBF Scope and Sequence? You knew, right?
Got a book.
Okay. All right. If it's a book, I don't need the whole book. I just need a couple of pages.
Um, there is a whole book, but there is also like a leader guide. That's what I use and stuff that I have that will show you like what does. Called Observation and Analysis.
Right. All right.
I have multiple copies of that. That is the premise from where we're working. Get better, faster, heck, ninety-eight guides. That is where it generated from. We are taking that ninety-eight guide, pulling of it and saying, this is the instruction we want to see in all classrooms across all campuses. And that is what. Guide. You're not getting better, faster and ninety-eight. Definitely have pulled from those strong instructional practices from that book. But that, that is where it.
My last piece, I promise. It's one of my last pieces. So there is conversation with relay from teachers saying that there is an expectation that they're in the classroom at a certain time because that's when the kids come in the class for breakfast. And they're expected to greet the students. Like really, everyone should be expected to greet your students coming in. But I've been told that that time doesn't count as teaching time. That, I'm just telling you, this is what someone said, you know, this is what I've heard from a couple of people saying, when you look at my school day, the time when I'm in my classroom, when I have to start receiving students using the relay scope sequence formula for greeting students to welcome them is not counted as part of my school day.
Generally speaking, and I'd have to know the specific school, but our morning meetings in our home rooms are counted as part of the student instructional day. So they are part of teachers' workday.
I'm speaking to breakfast.
No, I, what I'm hearing and what I would, what I would say is when the school door opens at seven thirty, but the instructional day doesn't start until seven thirty-five, it's breakfast. If I.
And so is that seven thirty counted as instructional time? Because they are required to be in their classroom and they are required to support having breakfast in it. So that fifteen minutes should be counted in our teacher's school day is what I just want to be clear about.
Oh, yeah. That's a part of the supervisory, it's a duty. It's part of a supervisory duty. And so, yeah, it's not instruction. We don't, we don't consider the time before home room for the start of.
It is part of, it is.
Part of the workday.
It is included as part of their workday.
But not part of our.
No, no, no. But I'm saying, but it's included as, so they, so what I'm clarifying is, that's what I'm clarifying.
They're paying for our.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Um. I have, Ellie, I have heard, you know, situations where a bus may be arriving late and, you know, it causes a teacher to leave late. We're talking, you know, I just had a conversation with Pete yesterday about that. We're looking to, you know, just find out where specifically that is becoming a consistent issue so that we can talk about how to, how to support that particular instance. But it's not, you know, it's not a widespread, you know, everybody's impacted. I know there are some people that are impacted with like buses getting there late or something like that.
I understood it was more of the getting them not to school, but home. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Kennedy? Not yet, Ms. Tensley Williams.
I just have a quick, a quick point. Um, I think that we should also, I don't like, I know we didn't really go super deep into this, but be like cautious with who's doing the coaching. Because I know that there is, I hear from teachers a lot. There's not much more insulting to a teacher than someone who has never taught a class, teaching them how to teach their class. Um, so I think that's also a big thing. Um, also, teaching isn't like, like, it's not to a textbook, right? Teaching is unpredictable every day. You don't know what's going to go on in your class every day. Um, it's going to be different. Something else is going to hit you that you didn't expect. Um, so we also just need to be like cautious of that. Um, because like, you never know what's going to happen. Um, so to kind of like, you know, say, this needs to happen, this needs to happen, this needs to happen today. Then you don't really know what's actually going to maybe prevent that, prevent that from happening. And someone who has taught a class for many years can be like, oh yeah, I mean, I kind of understand that. So it's like, we need to be cautious with who's doing the coaching. Because like teachers know, teachers know best for their students, in my opinion.
Ms. Brunel, then Ms. Tensley Williams.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for coming in tonight. Um, so one of the things I want to point out, because you know, I'm not a fan of testing. But when we look at what we put down as the challenge, we have so much bigger challenges in this district and other challenges in the district. And, you know, it's just, it's sad that everything we point to is how they do on a test. And it's just like, that's the focus of this, right? And so the focus is to, I greatly appreciate the fact that we finally have curriculum throughout the district. I had a very long conversation with a kindergarten teacher the other day. And she said, one of the problems is one year we're teaching with vocabulary and math like this. And then the next year they're getting different vocabulary to do the same math problem. So the kids don't know how to do it. Um, but again, like, so much about what we do, as you know, is not just about how we perform on a test. So when we say, you know, it's about getting our kids smarter, and I agree that our kids need to be smarter, but they don't need to be smarter just for the sake of a test. And then my other points are, you know, all of this sounds really great, but like, when we're having such issues with teacher retention, how are we ensuring that the new teachers are getting the same stuff? And to my point to that, what about the classrooms that don't have a teacher? So my son's classroom does not have a teacher right now for math. The assistant principal is teaching math. Is he being evaluated? Is somebody making sure that his curriculum instruction is on point? Because not only that, my son's class is supposed to be in Spanish, but all the work comes home in English. So that's not being followed up on. And so when it's a substitute, is somebody making sure that the instructional is getting done? When it's a paraprofessional acting like a teacher, are we putting them through the same professional development to ensure that those classrooms aren't being left behind? Because I can assure you, I'm sure they are. I'm sure my son's math class as a whole is not getting the quality instruction they should be getting when they've gone through three teachers so far and are being currently taught by an assistant principal. So my other question is, I only caught it on the last slide and a little bit on the second slide. Um, so if you can go back to the slides that talk about how much it costs. Um, now obviously there's cost benefits to everything and things cost money. And as long as we think the benefits are worth it, then the money is worth it. But we said that this was a grant from the BAR Foundation. And then on the slide that says year three, it says it was paid for ESER funding, general funding and 2023 carryover. So I'm confused as to how much has this program as a whole cost us? How much of it was funded by the actual BAR grant? How much are we funding now? Is there still money left over from the grant? How do we plan to fund this moving forward? If you want to answer that question in particular.
The answer to your question is $750,000 was funded by BAR. And that was around, primarily around the instructional leadership model, years one, two, and three that we talked about. This $1,050,000 is a separate investment because one of the things that, you know, speaking to receiving feedback, one of the things, one of the gaps that we heard regularly was like how are teachers supporting our diverse learners? And we went through our strategic plan and like, there was a huge focus on inclusion. And it felt like there was a miss. So, so we went and, 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 you know, participated in this inclusive school leadership institute for a separate investment, which is that $1,050,000. Chose Relay primarily because, um, all the work that they were already doing in the district. We wanted to make sure that we didn't bring in another vendor that had like something completely separate that really didn't have any context to what was going on. So we thought it was important, like if we're going to layer on this inclusive school professional development, we need to make sure that we're smart about it and that it's woven into the work that we're already doing in Hoyoke. So it was a long way of getting at, it's about $1.7 million, of which $750,000 funded by BAR. And this new investment was funded on ESER and general fund. And I'll add to that, Erin, that like, you know, we're talking about retention often, right? And we've been pretty lucky that we have leaders in the district, like that, you know, school leaders specifically that have gone through this training and expert teachers that have gone through this training. Um, we're not going to see like huge investments like this moving forward. But we do have to consider like, when a new principal comes in, how are they getting all this important learning? So there will be, you know, some recurring costs, but none to the extent that we have. Or when a new ELA coach starts, who's going to be coaching ELA teachers and a math coach? How are we going to get them caught up to speed on HPS's instructional leadership model? So, you know, we're going to have to have, you know, we're going to have to have some level of investment to make sure that the people that are in the roles carrying out the work, you know, I, part of the reason I brought Jackie in because this is what she's doing. And no one can talk about it like Jackie, um, because this is what she's doing every single day. This is the tool, these are the tools that she's using to make our principals better at, smarter.
And then, uh, one more point is when we see things with, you know, eighty-six percent said blah and seventy-seven percent this, and then here's a couple of examples. I would really love to see some negative comments once in a while. Because if seventy-six percent said it was good, twenty-four percent said something else. So, you know, I would just like to see what does somebody who doesn't think it's all flowers and roses think of it? When we're getting, um, quotes on, on feedback sometimes. And that's with a lot of what we see right here. Um, I think we like to always show the good, which is great, but it's not all. Not everyone sees everything the same way, right? Not every teacher teaches the same way. We don't always all think about the same thing. So just incorporating some of that feedback sometimes I think would be helpful for us. And then my last point, and then you can move on to the next person, is I'm hoping, I'm not seeing it though, the social emotional learning aspect of this. I'm hoping that somewhere in this, teaching teachers how to be teachers in today's climate, um, we're focusing on how to help these kids be more adaptable humans. Better humans, good humans, communicative humans, um, how to share those big feelings. You know, I don't think we, we put enough focus on helping kids to recognize those big feelings. So I'm hoping that incorporated in this is time spent with teachers to help kids with that. So, thank you.
Mr. Soto?
Yeah, your point is, is well taken, Ms. Brunel. I mean, you know, we could have said where it says eighty-four percent said there was high, offered high quality content. We could have said sixteen percent didn't. I just, I mean, and I do feel that like, and this is my experience and I don't want to offend anybody, but like us in our roles, we hear often what those negative things are. Like we've talked about, the reason this is on the agenda is because we were getting negative feedback. So our, our goal today was, was not to just like, you know, a dog and pony show or anything like that. These are facts. This is, these are responses to the feedback that we're getting on this learning, which honestly, you guys don't hear about. Like you guys don't hear the full picture all the time. And I will say, I don't, you know, the, I'd say ninety-five percent of the families that I talk to is because they, or teachers, because they have something, or staff members, they have something that, those are the roles that we're in. Like you're in Ward One, you know who you need to reach out to when you have a complaint. So like, we are fielding those and hearing all of those complaints. But I also think that, like, we have a responsibility to come out with factual information and the whole picture. And that's what, that's what today was about. Like, you know, some of the things that were said about Relay were, you know, respectfully just like, I'm not even going to say they weren't true, because those are experiences. Those are real, factual experiences. Some of the negative things that were said by some of our staff members were really how they feel. And you can't take that away from them. That wouldn't be fair. But to say that that's what plays about and that everybody feels that way? That is where I say, that is not true. This is, these are the responses that we got. And you know, the percentage of respondents, Jackie?
I, so I want to go back to, I don't know if it was last. That the discussion of.
Yes.
I was online in my basement. My head was so, because I, I'm fifty-three years old. My entire life, my kids graduated from the fifth high, I went to Hoyoke Public. There is not a chance that I'm going to put anything that is going to harm or disparage our staff or our kids. Ever. I'm with, I, like, it is my job to ensure that you have the strongest. To ensure that our kids are not only getting smarter, but are good humans. And I would, if I thought any move that I was making on the. Hurting kids or creating a prison, a pipeline to prison, I wouldn't do it. Not. I just want to say that I, I am very thankful that Stephen Anthony asked me come today. About the right work for our district. I don't, if we are out of. At any point, I very much argue. Work, right thing for our kids. And, and the test scores, Erin? I feel, and I, and I agree. I feel, and I, and I agree, the ten day, they don't get a diploma, they don't pass that test. And that diploma is, I just heard the other day, somebody said, getting a high school diploma adds six. Not only that, but also increases the weight that you're going to make over a lifetime. So I, I would be failing our kids if not. While I don't think it tests. Or worth as a student. Right now, today. That'll, right now, today. I have.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
To Erin. Most of my life I heard that when everybody agrees with you, you're not learning much. So that works. Um, I'd like to ask Ms. Lashine, this book, Get Better Faster, who is that buying? Do you have any that we?
I, I do. I, I, I put them on my desk, I forgot. Um, I will, um, I, I get it to Anthony or I don't know how, right?
Yeah, we can, whoever's interested in getting a copy of the book, I will say it's probably like three inches thick. So, um, if you, if you want a copy.
That highlight, that highlight.
But, but Jackie, to Jackie's point, I think the instructional guide for leaders is probably better. So we'll make sure that everybody gets a copy of that guide. But if you want the full book, let me know and we'll get you a copy.
A, a condensed version will do.
Yeah, sure. I'm, I can share, I can share with.
Yeah.
Anyone else? So I ju- I just want to say, um, thank you for the information. Um, I always tend to compare healthcare and education, right? Because of who guides it. Um, who kind of like the top leader. So you had, um, made a comment earlier about the principals, right? The, you're providing the coaching and the learning first to the principals. Who will then, you know, coach, let's say the assistant principal, however it is that you had your ladder going. It's the same thing in healthcare, right? So I'm sure the principal may not have taught every single type of subject. Science, math, English, social studies. But that's why they have someone in those areas that, let's say, expert teachers. Because that's the teacher that's going to know. So that's someone, um, that's a strength for them. Okay? One of the things that I've always been told when I be, when I became a nurse 27 years ago, don't, you're not there, um, to become buddy buddies with your patients. And you don't provide personal information. Because it will be used against you at any given point. Too much is being shared. So when I'm looking at educators, their job is not to become best friends with the students. It's to build a relationship that it is a trusting relationship. But it's also for them, um, to mold the student to become successful in life. We're sharing too much, where it becomes a point of divide. I hear too much that the leader of our district, um, never educated. Well, the administrator to Holyoke Medical Center was never a nurse or a doctor. And didn't perform surgeries. Okay? So then how can he be the administrator to hospital? Well, I can answer that for you. Because he has a medical director, a director of nurses, a director of human resources, a director of environmental services, a director of business management. Those people are the ones that run what needs to be run for every department. And he has the managerial side of it, right? He oversees that everybody's doing, what needs to be done. So he's holding them accountable, whether he fully understands their role. Eventually you start learning it. Same with myself, I've learned the role of all departments when it comes to healthcare. Is that something that I wanted to do? Um, and, and being in that management aspect. So I think what we need to start doing is kind of being supportive, share less, and really start coming together. Because if we continue on with this divide, do not expect to get your district back. We need to start being a little bit more supportive of, of the leaders and those that we have in place to do the work that's needed to get our students moving forward. And I think you, because obviously whatever you presented there made sense to me. It made sense, you broke it down, you explained it, I get it. There is a cost to everything. But if it's something that's going to be beneficial for our students, because whatever we were doing before obviously was not working. Yes, did that receiver have a hard on for Holyoke and kind of wanted to prove a point? Yeah, he did, but he also had the data to show it. You know, and no matter what he said, the data was right there. And so, um, you know, what was done before wasn't working. We, we're, if we're doing something that's actually going to be beneficial, then let's keep moving towards it. That's why I'm happy that you said after receivership, this is something that you would even fight for to keep. If it's something that's, like I said, that is actually working and is actually beneficial, then yes, why not? Why not continue it? Why do we want to go backwards? That's all I have to say. But thank you so much for, for the presentation. Next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Is new business and we're going to move with the student rep presentation on testing. Go ahead, Mr. Kennedy.
Alrighty, um, I have, I'm in the Zoom. Do I need to like share my screen or anything?
You're on Zoom.
I'm on, I'm on Zoom.
Um, did, do they, do you guys have it that you can share up there?
I, I did just log in, so in case I need to do it, that's perfectly.
I could, so we, you want us to project it?
Yes.
Up here? Alright, so I can do that right now. Um.
Yeah, because we, we have our packets.
Alright. So one, a, um, a very big thing over the past couple, my, uh, well, about a year, is the testing that has been implemented by, um, the district. And it's been talked about a lot. And I, as a student, yep, I'm holding.
Do you want to wait until he gets it up?
Yeah.
Or, yeah, because it was the, still the previous thing that was still up.
I'm working on that.
No worries. It's, I'm not, it, what I'm saying isn't on there right now, so.
Okay.
Um.
Alright.
So I just wanted to, so last time, I think it was a couple of meetings ago, I was told to bring some facts to the committee by the students. So that's what I did. I, I wish I brought more students because that was really cool what the Paris did. Um, but I brought, I surveyed both the students and the teachers. Um, and I apologize, it's a little bit long. But this one right here is, it might be a little bit different, ever so slightly different this year. But this is what the testing that I went through. Um, 21 total days of district mandated testing. We have three, um, three times a year for star math, three times a year for star reading, three times a year for ANET math, um, three times a year for ANET ELA. Science edulastic is three times a year, two sessions of ELA MCAS, three sessions of math MCAS and three sessions of science MCAS. Um, also next to it, you can see the times that will, I can, I bet will be pointed at. Um, however, something else that needs to be taken into account is on these days, we are often expected to switch from a testing brain to a classroom brain. Um, for some of them, not, not even all of them. I'd say for ANET, we're pretty much done with our day after we take our tests. Because I, we're testing for 90 minutes straight, we're not going to then go and learn algebra. Um, so those are all the tests that we took. I have, I might have more notes. Uh, ba ba ba. Yes, okay. So switching in and out of testing mode is incredibly difficult for students, alright? This is for 10th grades or, um, yeah, 10th grade students. So that is, um, fif- uh, 15, 16, 17 age students. Um, so that's incredibly difficult. But this number is just kind of ridiculous to me that there are 21 total days of just testing. Because it's not just the testing, it's, you know, how are we going to pass that test? Right? We have to learn, we have to be taught everything on this test. And we're not learning much of any, uh, real life situations. That, to that next slide, these are the other tests that we need to take at Dean, well, not tests. Um, um, the ELL students are required to test even more than the average student with reading, writing, speaking, and listening, um, all separate testing. We have our shop exams, our shop certifications. Uh, we don't have, we don't get our official certifications until later in our high school career. But we take many, many practice exams, not to mention the exams given by our teacher to prepare us, which do count towards our grade. Just last year, I took the Stop the Bleed CPR, First Aid, and OSHA 10 on top of all of the other testing that was implemented by the district. Um, and then obviously we need to work up to higher, higher standards with, or higher certifications, RCNA, Cisco for, um, uh, no, it's. It's the programming web and cosmetology exam. Um, and every student was mandated to take OSHA 10, which was given during the one class that actually was supposed to prepare us for more things in the future, our college and career readiness class. Um, so that is that. The next slide shows what I have at the top, why do we have these tests to begin with? The star was to gauge where students are at in the curriculum. Um, before, there we go. And, um, teachers give out their own test, let me say, teachers give out their own tests during the school year. I, I, and, um, they're often like, some teachers do weekly, um, tests to make sure their students know what they're given. Because teachers, like we kind of heard from, um, when the teachers came here, they're often not allowed to actually decide what is taught in their classrooms. And the one kind of thing that they can give is like their classroom assignments. I will say that last year, my E, E, English teacher gave us a final and it was like to kind of break us from all of that testing. And he gave us a final that was based on the materials, but it wasn't sitting in front of a computer and taking a test. But other teachers, we needed to do exactly that. Um, so, and then ANET was to better prepare students for the MCAS. Drop down to that graph right there, um, 20, in 2022, math, math is not the best example. But math, 29% of students were not meeting expectations. However, in 2023, after the district implemented ANET, 27% of students were not meeting expectations. That was a little bit of a bump. However, then we go to English and science, in 2022, 16% of students were not meeting expectations. The year we implemented ANET, well, quarterly ANET, 23% of students were not meeting expectations. Then we go to science, 31% not meeting expectations the next year after, uh, post ANET. 36% not meeting expectations. So we implemented this testing to better prepare students for the MCAS and it was not entirely successful. Because I understand that we want to get students past this test. First of all, I know this is to no one in this room, they don't, no one in this room has any control of this. We are one in I think six states that require a test to graduate high school. So instead of like feeding into that system, maybe we should figure out a way to get out of it. Because obviously feeding into it and implementing more testing is not being, is not efficient and is not helping. Um, but my main point was mental health. This testing took a very large toll on students' mental health. And I only have my campus's results. Um, and I believe there are, there are about 32 students who took the survey. It was given out to the entire 11th grade, but there were about 32 students. Uh, this one was not, okay. Did you feel that ANET testing helped you prepare for MCAS? Um, not, 58% of students said not at all. Um, fif- 40, sorry, 42% of students said kind of. The next slide, did you feel a sense of burnout last year? 87% of students said yes. And 12, uh, 13% of students said yes, but not any more than any other year. If you answered yes to that question, you were brought to another question. How quickly did you feel a sense of burnout? This one is very broad. Um, the biggest answer is right after the second ANET test. Um, so I'm not going to go through absolutely every one of them because it's very, you know, diverse. The next question, did you feel an, a decrease in your mental health last school year? 45% of students said yes, and only 19.4% of students said no, not at all. And then after that, you were brought to a scale, how much did it affect your mental health? Not a single person, but one or two who answered yes. The, the largest amount was a 10. Um, and I am one of those students, I didn't actually take the survey, but I was one of those students who was absolutely doing not, not doing good at all. Um, but like even before a five, there are only two total responses or total things. This one goes into the, uh, I actually wasn't originally going to put this one in, but then I realized that even the small margin adds to the, um, absenteeism that is talked about a lot. Did you ever skip school on the day of testing to get out of completing a test? Um, 22.6% of students said yes. And then I was, and I'm one of those students, FYI. Um, how often did you skip school due to testing? Um, only once or twice was, once or twice was, um, 57% of students. Two or three times was 42% of those students. Now again, that was a very small amount of responses, but even that adds up a lot at the end. Um, and again, that was only 31 students who actually took that survey. Um, anxiety. How are your anxieties levels during testing? Obviously tests are stressful, that's no secret. But the, um, the troubling thing was that the most amount of responses was that anxiety was practically unbearable. Um, during testing, not, but not only during testing, it was also in between testing, you know, going home. I think that's actually the next, yes, that is also the next one. Um, do you feel your anxiety levels affected your acts of daily living, socializing, sleeping? Yep. Uh, 90% of students who took the survey said yes. I can tell you that I got on a nice little addiction of energy drinks last year. Um, because I was not sleeping the night before due to testing. So I would come into school every single day with an energy drink, which is not very helpful for my already weak heart. Um, so when you have that much anxiety in school, it's going to affect you. You're not, it's not, you're not just going to go throughout your day like, oh, test is over, I'm done. Because in another four weeks, maybe, you'll have another test that requires the same for you. The next one, do you feel there's a benefit to this testing? Obviously students aren't going to say yes to this. Um, I do not feel like there's a benefit to my tests, to this test at all, was 61% of students. Um, and it partially benefited me, 31.5% said that. Now, that was students, obviously students are the ones actually taking this test. Students can contest what their mental health is. But students are also teenagers. And if they don't like something, they're going to protest it. So let's hear from the teachers. How did, how do you feel standardized testing benefited the students? Um, this, the answers were a little wonky, but it's the, you know, the point. I do not feel as though the testing benefited the students. 65% of the teachers who took this survey answered. Only 13% of students, or I'm sorry, teachers, said in their professional opinion, this testing benefited their students. On a scale, oh, sorry, next slide. On a scale of one to 10, how much do you feel this testing affected your ability to adequately teach your students? Um, one teacher, three teachers said less than five. One was I felt as though I was able to teach my students properly. And 10 was I felt as though I was doing a disservice to teaching to the test. No one, only three people said anything less than a five in that, um, scale. Because we're not learning things that we need to know from real, real life. Um, and I think that if you go to like college students, you know, they won't say that their high school test helped them for their, for their, um, for, you know, their studies, right? You're, you're a teenager, that's the diff- most difficult job you can have is be a teenager right now. Um, so there's that. Next slide. Did you feel, uh, I'm sorry, did you notice a decrease in your students' mental state on or around the time of testing? 65% of teachers said yes. Um, then you were brought to scale, on a scale of one to 10, how much do you feel this testing impacted your students' mental health? And no one put less than a five, none of these teachers, minimal impact to extreme impact. Um, most of them said seven, um, but everything was a, a five or above. On a scale of one to 10, how relevant do you think this testing is to prepare students for the real world? Um, six, uh, 26% of teachers, the six, said minimally relevant. said minimally relevant and very few teachers said anything above a seven-ish. Um, there are only ones and twos for anything above a four. Uh, this part's gonna be tedious, I apologize. Um, but I am actually going to read each and every one of these openers, not each and every one, there's a link um, to the rest of them that you can read, but these are the big ones. I also apologize, I'm not the most fluent reader. Um, okay, so an eleventh grade student, during my sophomore year, uh, during my sophomore year, my stress levels were on a hundred. Just the thought of failing or not doing my best stressed me out to the point where studying or sleeping was very difficult. I could not sleep and kept dozing off whenever I struggled a little bit on a test. This was very difficult and made me feel drained when I had work after school and other responsibilities. Next, eleventh grade student. As a student who has been told to do good in school and have good grades all the time, taking tests was probably the worst part. Having bad anxiety doesn't help when you are told these tests will determine where you are. You get nervous because you were, your life, all your life, you are told to do your best, but when it, but when does that really come? When twenty questions, okay, I read that wrong. When does the best really come when twenty questions tells that for you? What happens if all As, you get all As, but you fail MC, but you failed the MCAS and you are told that you will not graduate with a diploma? How upsetting is that? It kills your spirit. It needs to stop for hundreds, for the hundredth, uh, for the hundreds who are scared. Scared like how I was as a kid with anxiety and having so much expectations of being the best. This next one is very, very long and I am going to ask Ms. Wilson to read it for me.
So an eleventh grade student. Along with a few other things happening in my life at the time, constant testing started to make showing up to school unbearable. The only thing that allowed me to get out of my room in the morning was knowing I had my phone and headphones available to me if I really needed it. I was already absent for a fair few days during the year and needed to do attendance buyback to knock my absences from fifteen to eight. Testing on top of that got me, got in the way of my life. Around the time of the first test and second ANETs, I was at my lowest mental health of my life. It was really difficult to even care about the test due to the lack of support I felt I was getting. I appreciate some of my teachers and peers that kept me going through all of what was happening, but I feel like the district and the seemingly incessant testing put on us due to the district. I felt like there was no support from anyone with the authority to properly help me. I don't believe that any of the testing helped me with my future endeavors. Nothing about any of the tests made me feel well about the work I put in. The units we've had to do purely to prepare for ANET felt rushed and unnecessary. I don't blame my teachers as it was clear it wasn't materials they made. Teachers oftentimes know the material that works best for their students. I doubt that a higher up that does not teach these students that they bury with tests has a good grasp on what is best for those students. Learning is different for everyone and the people that know that best are the compassionate teachers who can adapt material to give proper learning to those who need it. A standardized test doesn't show intelligence. It doesn't properly gauge who should or shouldn't graduate. It only works for the few and discourage the many. It is an outdated way to look at students' capabilities and only help the district look good when their students do well enough. The only ones who profit are those greedy enough to knowingly ruin, ruin students' health.
Let me also say the students did not know what the survey was for until this question. Um, I didn't want them to skew, there was, I forgot to say this at the beginning. Um, it just, you know, at the beginning it said standardized testing, um, quiz and then at this question, it said what it was for because obviously I had to disclose that because it was gonna be public. Um, that was one of our eleventh grade students. The next few are gonna be Dean teachers. Um, how they, um, I can do these next couple ones. Yeah, um, so I also apologize, I know that this is very long, but these are like the big ones that I think stand out and you guys can of course read through them and I'll share the doc. Teacher, um, when learning how to teach these days, the emphasis is on UDL or Universal, Universal Design Learning. This practice is all about how education is not uniform and students learn and express their learning in different ways. Standardized testing assumes the learning is, is and expressing that learning can be standardized. As we can see today, that is simply not the case. Testing has its place in education, but the giant emphasis that is put on it, on it is a hindrance to the learning that can take place. Standardized testing came out of the Ivy Leagues as a meaning to keep people out. It hasn't really changed its purpose. Next, seems like students are extremely stressed when it comes to testing, which is something which sometimes is a good thing because it gives them the opportunity to step up to the challenge, but it mostly seems like we as teachers are mostly acting like we are getting these students ready for a twelve-round boxing match the way they look in the mornings when they are coming in for the day. I've seen kids running out of rooms crying and choosing not to come to school because they are so stressed over out, over one test that is a factor in the design if they grad, decision, I'm sorry, does this, decision if they graduate or not. Also, as a former high school student in Western Mass in the two, in two thousand and ten area, I was not the best test taker, but it would, but I was a great student. Doesn't seem adequate that stu, that someone that has straight As also needs to be standardized by a test rather than pushed further once through a unique process. This one I will allow you to read.
Again, a Dean teacher. Um, in my opinion, standardized testing negatively impacts students in two fundamental ways. First, it has a profound impact on the way students think about themselves in general and as a student intellectual. Because tests are standardized and humans learn and express their learning in such varied and diverse ways, many people can believe that they are dumb or inferior because of low test scores, while this might simply be that they are not good at tests. Or maybe they have an undiagnosed mental health issue or learning disability. Maybe they were not able to sleep the night before. Maybe the questions on the test are not relevant to their own personal experience, so it's difficult for them to understand the content. In spring two thousand and twenty-two, I had tenth grade students write open responses to the question, how do you feel about MCAS? The responses ranged from anger and sadness to deep-felt anxiety. These responses came from students who struggled in school as well as straight A students. Some went as far to say that MK's, MCAS days are the days they feel the most anxious they have ever felt in their life. Some were so upset that they used language that I cannot even use in the survey. Beyond the mental health impacts, these tests make schools seem like something where you need to be given a certain amount of knowledge and then regurgitate it back when prompted. It does not teach our students how to think critically and it does not give our teachers enough freedom and flexibility to actually work with students in deep, meaningful ways. All of this then creates an environment in school where so much time, energy, and effort is put toward test preparation and execution that the real goal of education is forgotten. Students should be learning how to think for themselves, how to think critically and how to be engaged and committed citizens in their own communities. Standardized tests take us further away from these goals and create schools that are more like factories churning out the same product and less like an environment that should uphold creativity, individuality, a learning deep about who they are and what their places in, place is in the world. In tenth grade at Dean, sophomores are some, in some kind of standardized test for almost twenty days out of the school year. This does not include practice or preparation for the tests. That is an entire month of school, over ten percent of academic days. And what is the end result? Negative impacts on mental health, students becoming more and more disengaged and unexcited about school and teachers struggling to maintain interest in the face of irrelevant and largely useless tests.
Thank you, um, okay. This is just a link to the other survey, uh, the other survey openers on survey questions. I can of course send that out. Um, yes, I will. My final thoughts on this, I understand that the MCAS is ne- needed to get students through their diploma. Do I agree with it? Absolutely not. I think it's ridiculous. I also think if you put many world leaders in front of the MCAS to pass that test, they probably wouldn't because they don't really need it for their, you know, job of running the world. Um, this testing has used, is a massive, and, um, it's affecting students' mental health. It's also affecting their ability to learn because they're learning about the test, they're not learning about the real world. This school that we are in is used to prepare students for the real world. It's so that you can send them out working as an active member of this world. I understand these tests happen when you're in tenth grade. Um, but they also can, if you fail MCAS, it continues up until your senior year if you have to and after. And it affects you the entire time. Mental health-wise, ninth grade was the best year I've ever had in Holy Public Schools. I was living the dream. I got to tenth grade, I have never wanted to walk into a building less. Even now, it still affects me. I don't want to come here tomorrow. So you, you're talking about absenteeism, you're talking about wanting to get kids in the door. This is doing the complete opposite. It is making students stay home, it's making students skip school and it's making students absolutely dread walking into their school every day. I as one of those students, I as one of those students who have really, was never lower in my mental state than I was last year. Um, I bet a lot of the teachers who saw me today probably didn't recognize me because of just how much I've changed over the past year in a not-so-positive way. This testing was to prepare students for the MCAS. I think it's time we look at a different approach because throwing tests, uh, Ms. Brunel said it perfectly a couple of weeks ago. Testing for tests is ridiculous. Um, I don't think it's helping and if you don't agree with the survey results, go in a, do a walkthrough, talk to the students. Um, something, uh, props to Superintendent Soto when I was a freshman. He, uh, we sat here in the Fightfield Room just to talk about Holy Public Schools and our experiences. Do that again. Do it with eleventh grade students. This only focuses on eleventh grade students because they are the only ones who have gone through this so far and only my eleventh grade students. I am going to suggest, uh, the North Campus does the same. I'm sorry to have taken up so much of your time, but this is very important. And to see it still going on, even if there's a little bit of a change to it, it's, it's kind, it's kind, it's kind of hurts. Um, so that is my presentation.
Thank you so much and stop apologizing. I did not give you a time limit. I said you do your presentation, you take as long as you gotta take, we're good. Aaron had everybody here last month till ten twenty-four. We're good. Go ahead, Aaron. Ms. Brunel.
I just have to give you one of these. When I got my packet on Friday, I was home. And I went out and I got it because my dogs were going crazy, so I knew it came. And I had no idea this was gonna be in here, Evan, and I was like, yes, finally, some student-driven information that talks to all the points we talk about and I just wish we had thought to do it sooner. First thing I want to say to you is I'm sure you've heard us talk about the Thrive Act. As we all know, the Thrive Act would eliminate the graduation requirements on MCAS. I will be forwarding this to so many people on your behalf, but may I please encourage you to do the same? Starting with Rep. Pat Duffy, our local state rep, I have her email pulled up, I'm happy to share that with you. And then Senator Adam Gomez out of Springfield is on the committee as well. If only we had this information when they had their hearing because it's students like you with information that you took your time to gather that are going to have the most impact on the voices that can constitute the change. We here as a body cannot constitute the change with MCAS. However, is it really necessary that we're MCAS-ing in third grade? I don't know the answer to that. Is it? Does the state require that we MCAS third grade? Okay, here's the reason I ask. Our third graders this year are our third graders who missed kindergarten due to COVID. They had kindergarten online, okay? What sparked me having that long conversation with the kindergartner teacher was a phone call I got from a third grade parent whose student's homework was to practice writing the letter A. Now, these students are expected to take MCAS this year? When they don't have the penmanship skills yet to write the alphabet in third grade? Question for you, is every single one of these tests on a computer?
Yeah.
Every single one of these tests are on a computer. We're putting no effort into teaching our students how to write. We're not grading penmanship, forget handwriting, cursive, right? How much of your work on a daily basis as an adult is on a computer? We need these kids off the screens first and foremost. And then to your other point about testing, when we had our presentation by the district last meeting about how many hours are spent on testing, I think one of the really important things that you hit on that we weren't hit on at that meeting was not just the time on the test, but the time away from learning. I, and again, I, I, I love the fact that I'm a parent in this district because I have my students, my children as resources because they come home and they tell me what happened that day. So they had ANETs not that recently, maybe it was in October. I asked my son, what did you do for the rest of the day? They watched videos. So they're not just losing the hours it takes to take the ANET, they're losing the entire day. And we wonder why our students are behind. I would love to see, and I don't know how this is gonna happen, especially under receivership, I just don't know the willingness. But why are we taking any kind of standardized test before third grade? Why are kindergartners, our first graders, and our second graders having to take any type of standardized test when they're still learning how to read? Ask a teacher how that student's doing and they're going to know how that student's doing. And that's to your point about ANET, right? Like, hold on, let me get back to that page. I loved your presentation so much. I emailed him as soon as I read it all. I was like, oh my God, this is so great. Um, the page that says what goes what? Yes, no, it's this one. So STAR is to gauge where students are at the curriculum and ANET is to better prepare students for MCAS. We don't need STAR tests. I bet you if you surveyed every teacher in the district, majority would probably agree that we don't need it. Why do we need it? Teachers were taught how to give a chapter test or a, a quiz at the end of the quarter and we have midterms and we have finals and we have all these other tests that go to your grade. And if you have an A or a B or a C or a D or an F, I'm sure the STAR isn't gonna give the teacher any more information than what their grading has given you throughout that quarter. And then ANET, I mean, again, we all know how I feel about standardized testing. To the point where the teachers were harping on the fact that a standardized test does not tell you how a student, an individual student who is diverse from the student next to him is learning versus the student next to him. So I, I, I would love to see STAR go away completely. I would love to see ANETs go away. I would love to see MCAS go away up until like, maybe we take them in eighth grade and ninth grade and to prepare for tenth grade. But why, why do we have to take them every year, every other year, third grade, sixth grade? I don't even know how often we take it. But even the years that you don't have MCAS, you're still taking ANET. Why are we preparing for MCAS three, four times a year when you don't have to take it to pass till tenth grade? But all that aside, we as a, as a city, as a community, as a populace, as students, as community members need to advocate for the Thrive Act. Because once we take away that, all of this can be adjusted. Because unfortunately, like Ms. Gashin said, none of us like the fact that we're judged by these tests, but we are. And until that changes, it is our job as a district to ensure that our students can graduate by passing this test, unfortunately. Do we need to test to the test, to the test, to the test, to the test, to pass a test? I don't believe so. But at the end of the day, as of right now, we must ensure our kids can pass the MCAS in tenth grade. But how we get there, I, I, I think is up for debate. And I, I, I thank you so much for this information. I encourage you to get your Hoeyokai North compadres to do it there. I encourage you to get your Hoyokai North compadres to do it there as well. I would love to hear from more teachers. I think to hear the, not just the students' impacts, but to hear the teachers who go to school for years to learn how to become a teacher, who have a grasp on what their goal is as a teacher. And it's not to help a kid pass an MCAS. It's to help the child be prepared to live life and be a productive member of society and to be the best that they can be, no matter if it's career, college, or what they decide to do. Um, unfortunately, like I said, MCAS are here. Whether they're not, they're here to stay is really up to us and how much advocacy we put behind the Thrive Act. So thank you, Evan. Thank you, Evan.
Mayor Garcia? Oh, wait, hold on one moment. Were you gonna respond back to whatever Aaron?
Just one quick thing.
Ms. Brunel was asking?
Yeah, just one quick, you know, I was just gonna say something. Another thing about the STAR is like, its purpose is also the purpose of why we have teachers. They know exactly where their students are. They work with their students every single day. They know where their, they know where their students are. And it even took to, another thing about STAR is it uh gauges your schedule next for next school year. It tells you what class you're gonna be placed in. You know what else is required to tell you what class you're gonna be placed in? A teacher recommendation. So what it like, that kind of doesn't really fit. I, yeah, I think it's the last, I I believe it's the last couple of stars. So I'm sorry.
Mayor Garcia?
Incredible job and and good job, Aaron, summarizing all of that. I just have my own testimony I wanted to share. And I remember being in, I think it was either the 5th grade or the 6th grade when we came here to Dean in some sort of uh hearing that was happening in the auditorium in regards to the MCAS test when it was being introduced. And I actively spoke against it at that time. But my own testimony is this. When I was in school, and I don't even have to ask kids because I remember being there. And fortunately for me, I was always a good, you know, I could do my assignments. I was really good at doing reports. But when it came to taking tests, whether if it's a regular test in the classroom or an MCAS test and then later ASAT tests trying to get into college, bombed it all the time. And I was just whispering over to Soto, I wanna get my SAT, my SAT scores, my transcripts to prove to folks that my grades in high school, I didn't have a good GPA to be accepted into college. That's all the anxiety you talked about, the stress, my brain retaining information just for 10 minutes was there. But just like you and what you just did, just like you, I was prepared enough to put information together and do a presentation. And I appreciate what the school district has done for me, just like it's doing for you to help you with the technical things like that. And you know, the how I got into college, thanks to other programs like Urban Education and Upward Bound, thankfully has allowed me to um uh do what I need to do to boost my GPA just enough to get in. The SAT scores, they're supposed to say every time you take them, you get better and better. Every time I took them, I got worse and worse. Um, I, but you know, fast forward, um, you know, between that time and today, you know, I'm very fortunate to the things that I've been able to accomplish. I think that level of stress, if it's anything that it's taught me, was to um how to deal with stressful situations. But uh other than that, I I I very much agree. And I think beyond just sending letters to our legislatures here, um, we should be probably sending letters to our federal delegation as well. Um, because I know that this, and that's what I was whispering over to Anthony, trying to understand if this is something that the federal government is um uh putting on states across the country? Or states are just adapting of whether?
We're required to have a standardized test. I don't think in every state, and to Mr. Kennedy's point, not every state uses that as a requirement.
But they require standardized testing?
Yes.
Oh, not as a graduation, okay, yeah. So I I I'm I'm with it. Um, the Thrive Act, obviously, I I stand behind it. And we need to do everything we can to try to communicate that to those lawmakers in charge. And you did an incredible job anyway you can mobilize um your colleagues in education uh to help push that message along. Great. And you know, I think a lot of us, you know, you got folks that do, you to, you made the comment, straight A's, but don't pass the MCAT. You know what I mean? That, I'm sure that issue was out there. With me, it was the opposite. It was okay grades. I happened to pass the MCAS, um, but that, you know, I I think that's it. I think for every kid, it's just a whole different experience. But the shared, the shared concern is that level of stress that we're putting on our kids and their mental health and our educators. Is it a necessary one, I guess? And um I'm feeling strongly uh on the no side. But you know, we'll we'll see what what changes will come in the pipeline. The other thing too is that, you know, I did get a little concerned um with how you express the amount of stress you're getting to the point where you're skipping school. So if there's any support we can offer you or we can connect you with, I if if come see me in my office if there's any way I can help, but we certainly don't want you, don't want to lose you um to that because we're all here to support each other. Um, I'm sure your 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 students, um, your friends, that's your support network. Your favorite teacher, whatever, you know, um. Stress and and depression's a real thing and and I would hate to hear anything negative come out of that. Um, because you're such a bright kid um overall. So um stick with it, do your thing, keep advocating, keep fighting, but don't give up. Um, because again, like despite the tests, you're prepared um to do what it is, what you need to do in the real world. Um, and that's 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 what we want. We want you to be a good, productive uh citizen, no matter where you end up. So, thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
So at first I was thinking to myself, well, that really doesn't, your your numbers don't add up to 21 days. But then I thought to myself, well, technically, it's not two hours for MCAS, so it's not four hours for two days. You know, they say, the state says typically it takes a student two hours to complete it. Schools give up to the full school day, which is a requirement. And so realistically, sometimes you shift back your groups that are testing after three or four hours. And then you shift it back to the classrooms, but I would have to say there's really no true learning. I gotta tell you right now, when Jack LaCachin was my principal at Kelly School, I better have done testing after A, I mean, classwork after A-Net. There was no watching videos after A-Net. I better have gone back and modified my work to meet where my kids were after that test, you know? But I better have taught. I should not have wasted it, you know, an entire, three entire days, which actually is not three, it's six. And then with science, depending on if you're in uh 8th grade or 5th grade, that's science years. So you know, so you you better not have, you know, skipped out on your role as an educator to give the kids off the rest of the day. But life has shifted. And we really do need to take into account that life has shifted after COVID for our students. We are in, you know, the most significant time for children and who have anxiety and depression. It is a national, is a pandemic the right word? Epidemic the right word? You know, and and it is impacting students more and more. You know, we can say buck up and do this and do that, but we are adults living through that time. We were not children who had to live through this just horrific time in their developmental years and the stress it put on them. And then, oh my, stay at home, stay at home, but now you can come back to school. And now you don't have to wear masks. Imagine the stress of a child who's worried about a loved one at home and their men, you know, their their health. And the stress of, oh my God, I'm going to school and I might bring something home to my little brother or my, you know, or my grandma or, you know? So, you know, I just want to say thank you for sharing this. And you know, if we are gonna recommend, um, which I'm sure we do, get more insight from Hoyokai, I would also recommend that it get um translated into Spanish. So all of our students in our system can participate in this survey.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Thank you. Maybe what I needed to say should be at the end because I don't know how much more we have to do before I speak.
Is it on this?
Uh, well, it's gonna be something about what they're talking about. Go ahead.
Yep.
This is for the elementary students.
Oh.
Um, I wrote this poem, um, January 15th, 2021 at 2:44 PM. The title is "You Will Never Outgrow Your Need to Read." Do you know your ABCs? I hope that you did not forget that they are called the alphabet. It doesn't matter what grade you're in, the alphabet can be your friend. When you know your ABCs, they can teach you how to read. If you can read, you will know the wonders of nature and how things grow. Do not miss out on your chance. If you can read, you will advance. When you travel near or far, the alphabet will be your star. If you are not sure of what to do, reading directions can guide you through. Never give up and you can succeed because you will never outgrow your need to read. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tensley-Williams. Should've known a poem was coming. We're good. We haven't had one in a while, so. So, um, no, thank you, Evan and Mr. Kennedy. Um, I know we have a a different relationship here, right? I know your mom. Okay, um, no, I I really thank you for all the effort that you put into doing this, um, this study, um, survey, um, bringing forth the kind of like the outcomes, the effects on students' mental health, the impact that testing has on student mental health. Um, great, I do agree. We do test too much, right? MCAS, I don't agree with MCAS. That's my personal. Um, as Ms. Brunel had mentioned, the Thrive Act, it was heard on October 4th in front of the joint committee. I watched it um through their livestream. Many students went out there to speak um on it. I'm not sure if you can still submit your, your um kind of like your, your survey, your statement um so that they can um add it to all of the other, all the other ones that they have received. But it, I mean, it's not like you only advocate one day for the Thrive Act, you continue talking about it. Um, and there's a lot of other things that are included in there. And I thought I kind of heard that there there may be a possibility that it'll become a question on a ballot of possibly, I I'm not sure if it's to end MCAS, to come up with an alternative, or if it's to um remove the requirement that you have to pass it for for graduation. I'm not sure how how it's gonna play, but I mean, there are things in the pipeline in regards. Everybody's talking about MCAS. That's it. Obviously, you know that there is no school committee member in the Commonwealth that can just say, we're not doing the MCAS anymore. That's just, it's not gonna happen. You you can't vote to to eliminate that. That's a, that's mandated by by our commissioner. Um, but for the other tests, which also I don't know what the cost is it of of each of those, taking those tests? Maybe that's something that we have to look at. Is there a cost for each student taking it? Then you know, then maybe that should be money that we're, we should be putting into something that's more um how would I say, like, back for the student? Um, those are things that we can, we can look, look into. Um, Mr. Ramar, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just a quick question. Um, can we as a, I guess as a city, like, take away some of the weight that MCAS holds on our students?
Ms. Wilson and then Mr. Kennedy. Oh. Oh. Mr. Kennedy.
Um, all of that, well, thank you all for your um support. I really appreciate it. Um, this has been a journey that I've been, obviously, since I was, you know, in 10th grade, I felt these effects um since the beginning. Sorry, I'm sick. Since the beginning, I felt these effect and they're still lasting. I'm done with MCAS, I'm done with A-Net, I'm done with STAR, and I'm still feeling the effects. And I have no doubt I will continue to feel the effects. I will say to Mayor Garcia's point, we do have an extraordinary guidance department. We have four total counselors, um, two adjustment counselors. And they have helped support the students. But the the thing is that, to Ms. Wilson's point also, this is something going on big in the world. Mental health is a gigantic, it's always been a concern, but it's a gigantic concern right now. There are too many things happening in this world and mental health is a, is absolutely terrible right now. So just adding on to it is not something we should be doing. I understand we need to gauge where our students are. Is this the right path to go down? That's the question that I want to put out there. Is this the right path? Um, I obviously took a survey of a small amount of students. I will be getting in contact with North Campus to try and get that. Uh, I have a couple of contacts over there as well as. No, I do have the student reps contract, contacts. I also do have uh Pat Duffy's contacts, so I'll be sending it to her. I gave her a tour from, in Student Government last year. Um, yes, thank you for your support. And I will, if you have any other questions, I will answer them. And yeah.
Thank you again, Mr. Kennedy. We're gonna move into referral data. Discipline and behavior?
Yeah, the the information is in your packet. Um, you know, I think one of the comments that was made at the last school committee meeting was that, you know, the the discipline data that the district puts out is a dog and pony show. And you know, I I I don't know what data that's being referred to, but I I will say that this is the first time that uh this year that this information was requested. And um you have it in your packet. We do take student culture very seriously. Um, we had a meeting with our APs and deans this morning to talk about like what it is, uh, you know, what what shifts we have to make um in the in the next quarter to to get at, you know, po, a positive student culture. We've been working through the retention work, um, teacher retention work group. And some of the feedback that we have get, have been getting around uh student culture, I think the biggest takeaway that we're getting is that, you know, when a student does get referred, us us being able to close the loop back to the teacher and let them know, you know, uh, what was either the consequence or what was done as part of the referral, that information is not consistently getting back to the staff members. So it creates this environment where where uh some people might feel like, uh, hey, nothing's been done. Um, you can see clearly in in the the data that is in your packet that, you know, we do log all of our referrals. Um, you know, there are consequences and they vary from from, you know, a a visit in the in the uh, in the student support room to a parent conference, to suspension. Uh, we have had to date when this was pulled about 278 suspensions. Um, and you have, you have all that data in there. I I I just want to name like, I'll be the first to admit that, you know, we talked about rezoning and we knew that it was a change. I I remember, you know, talking about it, thinking about it. I remember even when, you know, when we have a brand new principal, like, there seems to be this, this change in culture and this uh struggle to adapt to new leadership, new teachers, new principal. Um, and I want to name that, you know, in my experience, when that has happened, it had gotten better the following year. And, you know, I have to, you know, I can't sit here with a straight face and say that rezoning hasn't had an impact on on how people are feeling. hasn't had an impact on, on how people are feeling out there. It has, like, it's not just one principal that changed the building. Like, we moved principals, we moved teachers, we moved students. And we are feeling that right now, like, I am feeling that. I haven't had one year where I have felt this level of, like, you know, there's, there's, you need to do something more around culture in our buildings. So I want to acknowledge that I feel it, I know it, our team feels it. I do think that a lot of it has to do with rezoning. Now, I know it's not ideal. I don't think we were all, we knew how impactful it was going to be. We knew it was going to have an impact. But now, just in one school, like, it's a lot of our schools, and our students are struggling to, to adapt to this level of change. Our staff are struggling to adapt to this level of change. Our families are struggling to adapt to this level of change. But I want to say that, you know, our student support teams, our counselors, our deans of students, our principals, like, they are at it, they are working really hard to ensure that we do everything that we can to have a positive learning environment. The information is in your packet, it's there, it's real, it, you know, and, and we want, one of the things that's really different this year in comparison to last year is we are making sure that all of this information is getting into a common system to school brains, where, where we think, like, hey, this doesn't look right, we're following up with schools, like, hey, what's going on, like, you know, other schools have this many referrals, you have that. So we are making sure that we're touching base with the schools and that this information is, is being tracked in, in our system with fidelity. And, you know, we gotta, we gotta really think about after the holiday, like, what, what are the changes we're going to be making? What, it's, it's not uncommon for, when we get back from the holidays, to have, like, a reset. And I know that, you know, I, I'd say, like, I haven't heard much from our Dunahue community because there hasn't been much change in, as a result, the rezoning. But where, where we've seen a lot of change at Sullivan, at Lawrence, seen a lot of, you know, struggle to, to adjust. And, and I think that's what we're experiencing. But it's not for a lack of, of our, our counselors, our student support coordinators, and our, and our deans of students, and our principals. Not ignoring it, we're aware of it, we're feeling it, and, and we recognize that, you know, we got to do everything we can to support. We have an obligation to, you know, we talked about not just teaching our kids, you know, how to read, how to do math, how to test, none of that stuff. Like, we have an obligation to teach our, our students how to just do school. That's one of the things that the pandemic has done. It took people away from normal routines of learning, and I'm not blaming it on the pandemic. I think that's part of it, rezoning's another part of it. But it's not, it's not people just ignoring what's going on.
You had your hand raised, right?
Yeah. So thank you for this data. I think, you know, in one of the small little asterisks, it was, you know, last year, schools were asked to enter all behavioral referrals into school brains. And so I think that's where people thought, may have gotten the perception that things were not being reported. Since it was, you know, if it's not a reportable offense to the state, then it wasn't being put in. You know, and it's being tracked in a separate area. So I think, you know, I, I appreciate the fact that you're running, you know, so that everything gets entered into our system, which is school brains. I appreciate the thought that after the winter break, you know, there might be, you know, time to rethink about resetting the cultural and the norms in schools. You know, in elementary school, you talk about the first thirty days of school is not teaching. It's teaching the rituals and routines and setting the cultural, setting the standards and expectations. And, you know, I think that in, you know, where we are, with our students having the learning gap, a lot of our students having that, there may have been the push to kind of not spend as much time on setting that, establishing that. And I really think that we need to take a look and do that going forward. And I also think that, that we need to think more about next year and doing some sort of team building, some bonding even before the start of school, when we're starting to move students to a different school. So those students coming from Ian White or other schools heading to Sullivan, maybe creating some sort of day instead of field day, creating a, like, kind of like a preliminary get-you-know-you day and doing some sort of, like, scavenger hunt and building different groups of getting to know one another type of situation, I think, would be really important because, you know, there, there, you know, we are having, you know, some, some major issues that I know our administrators are taking very seriously. There's no doubt about that. But the sooner we help educate our students as to what is expected and make a decision as to where, as a system-wide structure within our school, what is a phone call home? What warrants then the next step to the visit to the assistant principal or things of that sort? I'm not saying that A predicts B, because we know that's against the law. You can't have, you know, certain things, but having some sort of flow chart for educators to be aware of and our families to be aware of, so they kind of know where they are in the process, like, ooh, this is kind of getting serious because we're moving down in this direction, not that they don't know that. But, you know, I think, and that was another retention work group, that was another suggestion from them as well. So thank you for this data, I really appreciate it.
Ms. Brunel?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment and thank you for recognizing that we are in a transition. And I think as we went through the rezoning process for the last year and beyond, we did discuss that quite often. And it is going to be a tough transition, and it's going to be growing pains. And what we need most right now is the community to rally behind us for the, the onward goal, right? The goal of the district moving forward. Because this is a hard year for parents, for students, for educators, for staff, for administrators. But the end goal, right? Where do we want to be in five, ten, fifteen, twenty years? And in order for us to get our district where we want it to be, this was a necessary growing pain. So it's at this time where it's critical that we have parent advocates voicing their concerns. We need to get the community more involved. We need to get people to show up to board meetings and to ensure that the P T O is functioning and showing up to those meetings and showing up to your parent-teacher conferences and, and being there and being a voice. Because as a whole, as a community, stuff gets done and gets done faster and better when there's more voices at the table. And that's why when we have a meeting like we had tonight, and we had our, our room overflowing with people and our hallway overflowing with people, and we get people in here and to show their concerns, like, wouldn't it be great to see our room packed like this every single meeting? I know we've said it time and time again, and education is the foundation to a healthy community. And right now, we are going through growing pains. We're repairing our foundation, we're finding the ways to get to the next level, and it takes work. And I appreciate you for recognizing those challenges, for, for accepting them and for our willingness as, as a team to, to continue to progress through them and to work through them.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
This question is, I directed at you, Soto. What can we do to get parents, we really, parents, involvement? Can you come up with an idea or something that we can do as school board members to, to help the parents? I don't know what to do, the parents are very important.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't have an answer to what you as a body can do. I can tell you that you have an entire team dedicated to engaging families every single. I don't have an answer for you, Williams. I would say, if I were, what could you do personally? Identify one or two families and make sure they're involved in either D pack or Ms. Brunel's point. Like, some of our schools already have a P B I S team, right? So instead of, like, getting parents to be a part of P P O, like, why don't we get some parents on our P B I S team? Where they're already trying to do things for the school, create, you know, cool things for our kids, which involves, like, field trips and positive culture and stuff like that. There's a lot of things that, that, it's hard to say what you as an individual can do. I think the one thing that this body can certainly do, really, you know, be aware that people listen to you. You guys are all elected officials. When you're talking about the school district, know that people are listening. And you do have an impact. And how you choose, if you ask me a question, I'm trying to answer it. How you choose, use that influence, that's on you.
Okay, because a few years ago, I put out over six hundred notices to people's doors, and I spoke with people. One parent came, that broke my heart. We need parents' involvement. I don't know what to do, like I said, if you know anything that we can do, I will personally do it.
Get one, one parent.
That's what I'll do.
Focus on that one parent, and then they get one parent.
I will do that.
And then they get one parent.
All right, I, I'll do it. Thank you, sir.
So before we move to the next thing, I'm just going to say, maybe this is just something for people to think about. What does parent involvement look like to you? Because parent involvement can be when my kid walks in through that door and I say, "How was school today? Are you having an issue? Is there something I can help you with?" Because I'm, I'm a parent that I can't be at all of his meetings, right? His I E Ps, we do them by Zoom. But I ask him ahead of time, "I need you to be a part of your I E P meeting. Are there things that you want me to write down just in case you're not advocating for it? I'm going to remind you during that meeting and say, hey, that to me is parent involvement." I may not have been able to go to the, to the parent advisory council meeting, but I was doing that. If they need something from me, say they call me and they're like, "Hey, Mildred, we're doing a fundraiser for something. Do you think you can donate this?" Yeah, I'll send it with Joel. Then I send it, I involve myself, but I wasn't there to participate in it. There's a lot of things that are happening around here in the district. Yeah, my son is out of district placement. But what I try to even tell parents, you know, and I try to get the, the district to understand is, try to make us feel more welcomed. Because for, for parents like me who are out of district placement, parents, we don't feel welcomed, right? If you, I don't know how many students are out of district that are going to the school dance and are part of it, who are, instead of graduating from that out-of-district school, they're coming to the graduation, participating with the high schoolers from here. I mean, I know what it is to sit at a, at a graduation at a, at a district and, like, a big community, right? Because you have the parents, it's the end-of-year celebration. So there must have been about seventy-five of us there. My son wasn't graduating, I know that. But I was there just to, to root on the two who were. You know, but then I sit there and I say, you know, I kind of feel bad for them because they're, they're just, it's just him and the other one graduating. Well, what about those that they grew up with back? You know, my kid was a Kelly School kid, all my, my, you know, my last three were all Kelly School kids. They didn't get to graduate with their, their classmates. They ended up being placed in alternative schools. So what does parent involvement mean to you? I think y'all need to really think about that because we all see it in different ways. And just because they're not there, they're there in spirit, there's other things that are happening, maybe in their lives, or they've got to put food on the table, or they're just getting home from work. Not everybody's at home watching a soap opera. Telenovelas.
I'm not saying that the parents don't care, not saying that at all.
Right, but I guess what happens is, is how people may interpret it. So I know that, I think that was the word that you might have been looking for. Their perception of things, so how they interpret things when you were talking about how they see relay. So their interpretation, because that's how it makes them feel, this is how they perceive, this is what relay's like, the same thing. So when parents are hearing, you know, why, why did only two show up? You know, I can't believe this, we did all this. Some of them are probably struggling at home themselves, or they're just, it's just been a bad day, or they already did what they could, right? And it's also rebuilding that trust. Because remember, that trust was broken because of the history of things. So just regaining, we're lucky they're still with us. And we should be grateful for that, that they still kept their kids in the district and are giving us a chance to educate them, and hopefully, they graduate. So that's just my little... Ms. Brunel?
Yeah, you just reminded me of this quote I read the other day, and I don't remember it word for word, but it was to the, to the notion of, there is no true reality because reality is per, is an individual perception of your life, right? So my reality of what I see, and I could tell you straight to your face what's happening, and you're sitting next to me and you're like, "No, that's not what's happening." You're just as right as me because that's your reality. So sometimes we forget that we have to take ourselves out of our reality and ask people, what is happening in your reality and how can I help, rather than... Because I was very discouraged when we tried to have our initial P T O meeting and no one came. And I come, I put it on Facebook, I was like, "Oh, my God." And someone was like, "Okay, well, reflect and look at how, what are you guys do, what could we do differently?" And so I started, you know, instead of complaining, reach, like, changing the perceptive of, like, how can I better reach parents? What can we better do? Someone suggested, like, right, how many different things? So it's just a, a matter of alter, altering your view of reality to be more receptive to other people.
All right, so we're going to go ahead. And the next item on the agenda is the two-twenty-five High Street purchase. The mayor, the mayor had to, had to leave, so I'll entertain a motion to table the item. Who's, who's placing the motion?
I'm going to put a motion to table the item.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is curriculum change process.
Well, this, I included it as an F Y I in your packet. I don't have a presentation, but I hope this satisfies the request to talk about, you know, what our process is for changing curriculum. I want to, again, acknowledge something that Ms. Lashine said earlier in our presentation, that when I came in as superintendent, we were, you know, we, we, we recognized based on all the feedback that we were getting that this system of autonomous schools, like, this school using that curriculum, this school using these practices, that that didn't work, we were at it for five years, and it was a need. Like, we were, I was hearing from teachers, like, we want to see, like, you know, Morgan's using that curriculum, how come we're not using it? We don't like this one, right? So, and the fact that we, you know, in, in a year's time, you know, the entire academic team is no longer here and is new, and that was a big, and I, under Dr. Mahoney's leadership, you know, I'll acknowledge, you know, some of you may have even said that, like, Anthony, you were never a teacher. I never claimed to be a teacher or, but one thing I am is going to make sure that, like, the people that I surround myself with can complement, you know, the areas where I might have some blind spots and gaps. And I feel really good. The people that I surround myself with can complement, you know, the areas where I might have some blind spots and gaps, and I feel really good about the. Academic team that we have in place, our school leadership team and Jackie and. Sarita and academics led by Rebecca, but you know, one of the things that I I asked them to do is to. Make sure we come up with a a process for when we are gonna change. Uh, or adopt a new curriculum, what's that process gonna look like? It's a very inclusive process, we involve teachers, we involve expert teachers. We vet different curriculums and then we we select the one that we think is gonna work best. For um for our teachers and for our students. We have a process right now moving forward. That um, we're gonna review every five years. You know, our our curriculum, so it's a five-year curriculum cycle. It doesn't mean that we're gonna replace the curriculum. It means we're gonna say, alright, we have this curriculum, it's been five years. Is it working? What do our teachers think? I was, you know, what what are our student outcomes? And and like, it might solidify like, yep, this is the right curriculum, we're gonna stick with it. And we'll evaluate it again in five years. Um, or it might mean like, hey, this is not working. And there's something better out there, so let's go find that something better, but let's make sure it's an inclusive process. And. So, you know, you have a table here that shows everything. I do wanna plant the seed right now. Not by choice, not by choice. The College Board, which is is the curriculum that we're using, Spring Board. For grades six through twelve, let us know about a month and a half ago that after next school year. They're no longer gonna be having a a curriculum. So we are gonna have to go through this process for ELA for grades six through twelve. But that wasn't, that wasn't a choice that like we made, it was kind of sprung on us, they let us. Hey, giving you a heads up, after next school year, we're no longer. Gonna have uh Spring Board as a product that's gonna be supported. So we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have to exercise this process, but uh I feel really good about. You know, our curriculum being on a five-year cycle, how we go about selecting that curriculum, it's inclusive of teacher voice. Uh, but the information's in your packet.
Yeah, that's fine, Ms. Wilson.
So I love this. But I I'm wondering about the special education. Um, and you know, an ELE or ELL, whatever you wanna. Um, is that included in this review? Speaking as a special education teacher, you know, we're taught um one curriculum. So, you know, we had some really outdated materials even back in the day, so I'm wondering if that's gonna be included in this.
Um, that is a good question. And I do have Mary Ann here and Rebecca Thompson here. I do know that it is, it it's kind of a hot topic right now, we're going through a review, we've hired a consultant to. Um, with the focus on like. Hey, like a lot of our special education processes and the way we've operated for many years. Um, and haven't seen results for our for our students. You know, something's gotta change and and the the shift really has to be like, how are we tying? Instruction and academics with our special ed department so that it's not just. About compliance, 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 right? So, you know, I, Mary Ann and and Rebecca are here. I don't know if you guys wanna both come off camera and talk, so the question on the table is. Is we have a curriculum review cycle. How uh how is a special education uh curriculum? Or or tools, how does that come into play?
Mary Ann, I'll start.
Just often, if you wanna jump in, so a a few different ways. Um, one is that we have not. Um, I don't wanna say historically, I I don't have all of that context, um, but our process that we are currently. That we adopted and went through in the spring, we're even including our sub-separate. Teachers in that process, we're including um special educators, our ELD staff in that process. Uh, because we wanna make sure that every classroom, every co-teacher. Every sub-separate room has access to our tier one core across the district, first and foremost, and so that we can start. Ultimately, the goal for many of our students is to try to transition and and ensure that we can access um. Grade level standards and so um making sure first and foremost that voices are included in all of that. And now, um, as. Anthony stated, um Superintendent Soto. We also wanna really make sure that we are focusing on more than compliance, but that. Compliance doesn't improve until you really focus on improving teaching and learning for our um students with IEPs. Um, and so Mary Ann, I don't know if you wanna speak a little bit to that as well.
Yeah, thank you Rebecca, um, thank you Superintendent Soto. Um, I'm gonna do my best, my voice is is uh starting to come back, but it's not totally there yet. I wanna stress what what Rebecca uh Ms. Thompson shared. Our departments are working very very closely with one another and partnering in this work. To ensure that all of our teachers have access to all of our curriculum. Um, we need to ensure that our students have access to uh their grade level content. Um, so access to that general education core curriculum, um, access to all of our interventions. As well as specialized curriculum, um, we're actually doing a needs assessment uh coming up uh in the next week. Um, with all of our teachers, um, so that we can ensure that um they all have the materials that they need. We have many new teachers, brand new teachers, um, to ensure that we come up with a plan for providing professional learning. That is gonna be meaningful, um, and that we can stagger um over the course of, you know, the next several years. To ensure that everyone gets what they need in a way that is supportive. We we we've learned from um previous years trying to do too much too fast. Um, and it can be very hard for our educators um to to be trained in multiple curriculum all at once. Um, so we are really focusing on um looking at what those needs are. And making sure that all of our teachers are getting what they need, um, including access for our PR educators. Who are critical in implementing a number of these interventions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Courier and uh Ms. Thompson. So any further questions on the curriculum change process? Okay, moving on to ongoing business, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Uh, the special meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of September eighteenth, along with. The regular meeting minutes of October sixteenth. As a pack. Okay. So we have a motion and a second, um, any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Um, Wilson.
Uh, I'd like the correction to be uh to read in both of them, it's Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Okay, hold on one moment, I'm just writing down who the second was. So correction, so is that just like a, um, we can do a friendly update?
Yeah, it's throughout that she's being referred to as Ms. Rivera, and I believe that it was clarified that we we refer to as Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Was that on?
That was before the state that we made that decision.
Oh yeah, no, yeah, I see it, yep.
It's throughout, it's on the attendance and throughout.
Yeah, they'll make those. Anything else, any other? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion passes unanimously. Updies from subcommittees, um, policy, Ms. Wilson.
So I sent out an email to all of you, um, with the draft of the administrative assistant position. Um, and then I, I'll, um, so I am looking forward to bringing quite a few. Um, policies to uh the full school committee uh for review. Because some of these are going to, I'm looking for final approval so they can be changed um on our website uh moving forward.
Excellent. I'm just writing here, need to add to next agenda. Um, you're gonna send that to me, all of the ones that are, okay, great. Um, finance subcommittee, Mr. Wellhand.
Thank you, um. We had a meeting last month, I'm gonna have the minutes ready for the next next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So. She'll be coming back, she left her coat. So Ms. Ms. Brunel for the, oh, I'm sorry, oh, I thought you were done, okay.
I'm done with that, uh, the the joint committee, gonna be meeting um scheduled for. Um, November twenty-seventh at six, six PM.
Yep.
That was the. Scheduled from a prior meeting, that was canceled for some reason. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, so we just gotta make sure that that gets posted by.
It's already posted.
It's already posted, yeah, cause actually tomorrow would be the last day, cause uh. Thursday's a holiday and I think Friday's also observed, so then you have Tuesday, Wednesday, Monday. No, Wednesday, Monday, uh, for the notice. Okay. On the city website, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm having, we're having issues with Shayna being able to post directly, so Sam was helping us with that. Um, I'll make sure to, I go in tomorrow that that gets taken care of, so.
Okay, great.
I don't wanna misspeak, I, we were working on it today.
Let me just look real quick before.
Like, I I honestly don't know if they were able to resolve that issue so that it can. He got the, got the agenda from from Sam earlier today, just needed to change the date and time, so. It's not done already, it'll be done tomorrow.
Reset act, so then, yeah, it's not on there yet, okay, great, thank you.
November twenty.
Yeah, the, they have um November twenty-first. And then the next meeting after that is the Board of Assessors, November twenty-eighth, so that one still needs posted. Okay, great, uh, moving on to um diversity, equity and inclusion subcommittee, obviously, um. Oh, perhaps an update, Mr. Romero?
Well, we we could not meet because we were in a. Yeah, conference, but our next meeting is December thirteen. At six. Quick callback to our um policy subcommittee, it's on the eleventh of December. You welcome the public, we would love your comments and. Any feedback you have for us.
December eleventh, right?
December eleventh for policies, December thirteenth for.
So I believe I broke my own rule and I scheduled a meeting during a holiday celebration. And it is Hanukkah during that time, so I believe I have to reschedule it, cause I just scheduled myself a meeting when I'm celebrating Hanukkah. So even I make mistakes.
That's okay, and I told you she'd be back.
I told you she'll be back.
I thought you were gonna go on Zoom, then you would have heard that because I said. Take it, it's cold out there. Um, the next items are, they're FYIs in our pocket, obviously, because this way it's ongoing updates. Making sure that we're up to date and aware, and that's the abs- attendance and chronic absenteeism. The middle school building update. Uh, the staffing update, kind of just seeing who's still, you know. So is there any questions on any of that, Ms. Wilson?
As you know, so I'm just wondering, um, with the staffing update, um, I see that. Uh, there are a number of students not receiving services and I'd like to know how the district has communicated that. Um, to families that their students are not getting the services as of this time.
They received a letter.
They did get a letter.
Each each family receives a letter when there's interrupted service.
How soon um for the interrupted service do they get the letter? Because. I'm just asking because I did have a constituent reach out to me and they did not know that their child was not getting the speech and language services. So I'm just wondering when that goes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, Mary Ann's with us right now, I know the letters went out. Um, because that's how we were able to compile the data, the the number of students that. Um, that were impacted by this, uh, but I don't know, Mary Ann, how often? You know, if, like, give me, I'll give you an example, if all of a sudden we have a speech therapist that. That has been here all year, but her last day. I I think the adaptive PE is actually a good one, like, when are those students gonna get a no- a a notice?
So the there, so the interruption of service letters typically go out um within two weeks. Um, of the the disruption of the service, um, there are times where, um. If if an employee is out, um, and then they end up leaving, that it could potentially take longer. Um, but we typically know if somebody gives their notice, um. You know, that they're leaving, that there will be an interruption, um, if we're not able to hire a replacement. Or work with one of our vendors that we partner with, um, to get a replacement for those services. Um, so the the family should get letters um within uh two weeks. Um, if they're not, um, then, you know, so Ms. Wilson, please, um, you know, if you if you wanna reach out to me. Yeah, and and send me an email and let me know, um, you know, who the family was that I can support. Um, or the the school, so that we can follow up to ensure that the let, all the letters go out in a timely fashion.
I always forward them back to you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a question in regards to owing them that time? Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how this is gonna work, what if you don't hire somebody that whole. That whole year, you can't find somebody, I mean, we really need to come up with a better plan. Um, as to how we're, even if it means that the family looks for an outside service. And obviously that would be us having to pay out, wouldn't it be? You owe the service.
I mean, it would, and in some cases, so we, you know, we would ask that the family, you know, in the letter, it actually speaks to. The family reaching out um to to the the special ed department, so that those conversations could be had. Um, but yeah, we, you know, there's, we try to provide compensatory so- services, like. But it's all, you know, it 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 has to be a a mutual agreement between the family and and. Special ed department, like if we wanna do it, if we're talking about speech. We've tried to see if like some teachers would stay after school and take on a caseload. Where there, where there might not be a speech therapist and, you know, family would have to agree to that and want want to to provide that. Tried to, you know, diff- uh vendors to provide the service. Um, there's, you know, it, there's not, there's more than one way to do it. But it, you know, we ask that our families, you know. Reach out to the special ed department so that. That those conversations could be had, but yeah, and there are some scenarios where. You know, if there is a licensed uh speech therapist that we vet and. We're we're, you know, we're comfortable with that service, we, that that would be a scenario where.
Ms. Wilson?
Right, because if a student is required, if the the service is on their delivery grid and we are not giving to them, we are required by law to give compensatory services. So it's not as an. If. It's a matter of when, I just wanna clarify.
Yes.
It's 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 when will they get these services? And that we should be tracking the amount of time that we owe these students. So that's just, I just wanted to clarify that compensatory services are required by law.
Let me, I just wanna note that we do, we do keep track of it at every school, um, so we actually have a tracker that we use, um. For every school that keeps track of the student, the type of service, um, the amount of service that's missed. So that teams are able to make those decisions, um, when it comes to providing those compensatory services. Again, our hope is to be able to get staff in place, um, so that they're able to make up the service, um, during the school year. There are times where we do are able to provide services, um, before and after school, um, during vacation academies. Uh, during summer program, um, so we try to be really flexible and work with families. Uh, to to come up with ways to provide those compensatory services, but we do track it for every individual student. Um, where there are missed services, so we do track that, I just want folks to know that.
Ms. Wilson?
Just one final thing, um, if anyone's looking um for where the up and coming uh desire is. Um, I'm gonna tell you right now, speech and language therapy, if your student's thinking of going to college. That's a great area to get into because they're highly sought after, as well as school psychologists. Let me tell you, especially a bilingual school psychologist, you will never be out of work. So I'm just pushing that if you're thinking of what you wanna become or going back to school, think of those, please.
Or sped, special education teacher or.
Right, if you already have a degree, right, if you already have a degree. Right, if you already have a degree, right, if you already have a degree, you can go back for your special education licensure, um, which is what I did, um, uh, to become an educator, and it's a, a different process. And I'm happy to talk with anyone about that. It was the best decision I ever made.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Um, the other thing, not, there's no, no out-of-state field trips, Ms. Tensley. I'm almost done. The next thing is, um, the student activity approval.
Yeah, I'm looking for support. Um, this was one of the things that we talked about, uh, in terms of getting the school committee involved more. I am looking, the, the high school is looking to add, um, in, eh, a, a new student activity, and it's around restorative justice. Um, so, so we're looking to get approval to create the Roots student activity. Um, it will be at the High School North Campus. Um, the, you know, i- it's to support the implementation of the restorative justice practices within the school. Last school committee meeting, you heard from our restorative justice team. Um, you know, they're, they're, they're looking to be able to fundraise, um, to help with the restorative justice program at the Holy Oak High North Campus, and I'm looking to approve that and support that with your support.
You already approved it, November 1st.
Yeah, I signed it, but this was one of the things that we, you know, we said we would always bring to
Oh, okay, see ya.
To the school committee for support. If at any point, like, you guys are, you, you as a body are not in agreement with a particular student activity, you've seen some of this stuff come up in other communities nationally, where the school committee wasn't aligned to a student group or something like that. That's, that's the point of me bringing it to this body. If it doesn't align to your values as, as a body, that I need to know about it because I, you know, I, I need to evaluate. I want the students to be able to raise money. I appreciate that program. But it's, it's gotta be something that the school committee also align to.
Yeah. Can't take, no, we don't, but we can't take a vote.
Okay.
So, but thank you. Um, I'm sure that if you don't approve, we would've came right back at you.
Yeah, I'm sure.
All right, the next thing is teacher retention working group update. Anybody have any questions on that? We've seen the, the update between, and they've been involved, those, um, who came, um, and to, and spoke out, um, are getting updates. Uh, next thing is HPS emails. I would like to, um, get the HPS email. I think it's important that we separate our personal from, from our school committee work. Um,
Sorry.
Ms. Wilson?
So, um, I did get my HPS email, and I do wanna let people know that I had difficulty getting into it. Um, and the reason I did is because I didn't have a code on my phone. I know it's very weird, but they need this dual dingy dingy, whatever it was, but as soon as I put a code on my phone, I was able even to get in from my computer. So I just wanna clarify, there's like this double security thing. Um, but yeah, so I, I'm gonna be, um, changing my email for a school committee to the HPS, um, to the HPS one.
Yeah. That's a two-step verification. It's just an added security to make sure you are who you say you are. So, uh, you could use Google Authenticator, or you can use your, your cellphone. It'll send you a text. Just verify, yep, I am Ellie Wilson, and I approve getting access to this email.
I did need support through that because I used to be technically savvy and I no longer am, obviously.
Okay. So yes, I personally would like, um, I know I've had it. Um, I probably do have it. It's just
Everybody has.
I can't remember how to get back in it. Um, so maybe if somebody can guide me. Um, Ms. Tensley Williams, it would be a good idea for you, Jay, you know. All right.
So what we have been doing is just emailing both your, your HPS email and whatever email you have listed on the website. Um, as Ms. Uh, Wilson mentioned, like, if you don't want us using your personal email, please let me know. And we'll remove that from our website and we'll stop, we'll remove it from the mail group, uh, of, of
Do not remove mine until it's, I'm definitely, okay.
Not going to, only if you tell me to.
Okay. And then last but not least is the announcements. The D-PAC meeting is Tuesday, December 12th. And obviously, I can never forget, it's the uh, Special Education PAC, the holiday event. It's Tuesday, December 19th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Holy Oak Merry Go Round. Um, I don't, I don't think there's any other announcements, so with that being said, oh, Ms. Wilson?
Sorry, but, um, I do wanna make an announcement that I did have the Ward 7 meeting. Um, so, um, uh, you know, I had, uh, a few people come in. It was very nice to give them updates to the school, um, tell them what's going on. Um, you know, the big number one question is receivership. When are we gonna be out? How are things going? Uh, we, you know, we talked about the restructuring of the schools. Um, you know, there's quite a few hot topics, um, that went on, um, that, you know, were discussed. So, um, that's something that myself and the new, uh, Ward 7 City Council, we plan on doing that on a regular basis going forward. I just wanna let you know we did have that meeting.
Excellent. Mr. Romero?
If you wanna take a picture of, uh, PEC before it completely goes down, do it now.
I know, right?
But what about your Ward 1 meeting?
Oh, my Ward 1 meeting was, uh, we had a couple of people show up, um, we had a few questions about our history of, um, how the school landed, how the school department landed in receivership. We also had a couple of questions about transportation and what we could do to make it a little safer, or the whys of how it came to be that they used to have it, but they don't now, how it like, and, uh, eh, uh, from an unsafe walking scenario to a now safe walking scenario and um, just lively conversation like that.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Just let me know, um, of date and, uh,
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Even though we can't vote.
Oh, that's right. So then the meeting doesn't end? No, we're just
Or we all just do what everybody else did.
9:43 PM. Good night, everyone. We'll see you.